Is she on?
Corey, are you there?
I am here.
All right. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the City of Campbell Planning Commission for July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four. We have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Buckbinder, can you please state your presence?
I'm Commissioner Buckbinder. Despite what is in the agenda, I was able to make it here tonight, so I'll not be attending from my house. I'm attending from here.
Thank you. Commissioner Fields?
Present.
Commissioner Majewski?
Present.
Commissioner Shaski?
Present.
Commissioner Cray?
Here.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Present.
Pastor Campcorn?
Uh-huh.
Chair Scissor?
Yeah. Okay, so my name is Alan Zisser. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission this year. First of all, I just, I just want to say since tonight's a really long agenda, so we, I kind of apologize in advance for those that are attending that it may take a while to get to your item. We usually don't have this long of agenda, so please, please bear with us and I'll try, we'll try to move along at a reasonable clip. If you want to speak, although we'll, we'll take you, allow you to speak even if you haven't filled out a speaker card, but there are speaker cards if you want to fill them out and give them to Ken so that we know that you want to speak, we can call you up, but you'll get a chance anyway. So regarding the minutes, has everybody reviewed the minutes and are there any corrections or additions? Do I have a motion?
Well, a little approval of the minutes of our June twenty-fifth meeting.
Of the second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion of second. Can we have a vote? Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaski?
Aye.
Commissioner Cray?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
abstaining.
Pastor Campcorn?
Aye.
Chair Scissor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Communications, general modifications, Director Eastwood, do you have any communications, modifications or postponements to notify us of?
Chair Zisser, Plan Commission, no agenda modifications or postponements. You have received the desk item. Number of comments received on item number five, which is the Valley Oak subdivision. I think for.
Okay. Is that like just before the meeting?
You, you've received desk item with a number of public comments on item number five. Just want to make sure the commission received that.
It was just before the meeting.
Wait, Eagle?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, this point, this point of the meeting, I'll, I'll open it up for all requests. This is the point in the meeting where any member of the public may, may address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda. You may speak up to five minutes, but the planning commission may not take any action today. Again, this is something that's not on the agenda. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak. Anybody in the chamber online? This would be on a item that's not on the agenda.
Let's speak, Chris. I want to say to the audience, in the lobby, there is a digital copy of the agenda. If you'd like to look at it, also, if you have the ability to go on your phone, laptop, you can find our agenda online. But if you do not have that, in the lobby, there's an iPad that has the complete agenda for tonight.
Okay, just let me, since, since this is long, let me just remind everybody, you don't usually do this, but the first agenda item we're going to cover is Peggy Avenue. Next one is Audrey Avenue. Third one is the First Street, one oh three First Street, South First Street. The net, the, the next item would be Virginia Avenue. Then there's Hamilton, nineteen forty Hamilton Avenue, and then two sixty-six East Campbell, which is Alguapo's. And then the last one is a Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. That's going to be published. So, so hopefully you're all here for one of those agendas. Um. So I'll close the public hearing. Regarding. Okay, so members of the public may be allowed up to two minutes to comment on any, any public hearing item. Applicants and their representatives may be allowed, allowed up to five minutes for opening statements, up to a total of three minutes for closing statements. Items requested, recommended for continuing instance are subject to planning commission's consent at the meeting. Okay. First item up is thirteen sixty-one Peggy Avenue. Public hearing to consider the request of, excuse me if I get this wrong, Sung Wah Kang, to allow the demolition of an existing thirteen hundred and thirty-six square foot single-family residence and the construction of a new twenty-six hundred and twenty-one square foot single-family residence in a five ninety-five eighty, eighty U on property located at thirteen sixty-one Peggy Avenue. It's, the application under consideration is the site and architectural review permit, file number PLN two oh two three eight nine. Staff is recommending this item be deemed categorically exempt from CECL. Planning Commission action is final unless appealed in writing for the city clerk within ten calendar days. Our project manager is Nishant Fiony. Nishant?
Okay. Just give me one minute.
He was remote.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nishant Fiony. I am the planner for this project. This project is located along the north side of Peggy Avenue between West Hacienda Avenue and Steinway Avenue. It's an eight thousand two hundred and nineteen square foot R one ten lot in the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan, and it is currently developed with a single-family home and garage that will be demolished. One thing to note before we get into the project is that the parcel is currently eight thousand two hundred and nineteen square feet with a twenty-five foot right-of-way. The neighboring property to the north has a twenty-foot right-of-way, and the applicant would like the right-of-way on their property to match this. This requires a vacation of five feet of excess right-of-way. This is a separate discretionary application that is taken to the city council by the Public Works Department. If this is approved, the parcel will be eight thousand five hundred and sixty-nine square feet, so the plans that you see before you are based on that parcel size. The applicant will need to complete this process before getting a building permit for their proposed project. The applicant will be building a new two thousand six hundred and twenty-one square foot home with a five hundred and ninety-five square foot statewide exempt ADU shown in this elevation. Statewide exempt just means that the ADU is exempt from being counted against certain objective standards, including floor area ratio and lot coverage. Project conforms with all setback, floor area ratio, lot coverage and height standards. Design is consistent with surrounding homes. It will include a shingled hip roof with dormer elements, stucco and wood paneling siding and limestone elements. Project was reviewed by the Site and Architectural Review Committee on May twenty-eighth, and they recommended a planning commission approval. Project is removing four trees, planting four and retaining three for a total of seven. Trees and bushes will be planted in the front yard and trees in the rear yard. And in regards to privacy, this will be a single-story home without significant visibility into neighboring properties, and some of that visibility will be screened by trees in the rear, so staff doesn't believe that there will be any privacy impacts. Staff has made all necessary findings and is recommending approval of the project.
Okay, thank you. Um, time for questions. Start over here?
All my questions in CHARC were basically, why is this coming to CHARC? Planning, city, answers were explained. I don't have any other questions on the property.
Mike, can you elaborate a little bit on the, on the changes to the right-of-way?
Sure, so let me just pull up an exhibit. So the right-of-way for one three six one is twenty-five feet. The property to the north, it's twenty feet. The applicant would like the right-of-way on their property to match.
A little bit.
And we can't hear you, Nishant. You gotta talk louder.
Sure. So the right-of-way on this property is twenty-five feet. The right-of-way on the neighboring property to the north is twenty feet. The applicant would like their right-of-way to match that of the property to the north. So they have to go through a discretionary process that's reviewed and approved by the city council to vacate these five feet of right-of-way that you see right here in the exhibit. So that's a discretionary process. It's not guaranteed. They need to go through that process after, after this hearing.
Okay, Roger.
Oh, we, we haven't finished.
He has the answer to the question.
I'm sorry, you're with public.
Yes. There we go. Good evening, Plan Commission members. Roger Shores with Public Works. Just to explain a little background, this property is in the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan, and it comes with a streetscape, a street right-of-way plan that was adopted back in the nineties, early two thousands. So this section of Peggy Avenue was designated to be only a forty-foot right-of-way because there's not going to be any curb gutter sidewalk installed ever along this street. So if you look, the house to the south of the project does have a sidewalk in it because it was developed prior to the adoption of the stamp plan. And so as part of that plan, council authorized that if property owners would like to have the, the excess right-of-way returned to them, they could submit for a street vacation and excess right-of-way vacation application and reclaim that right-of-way that the city will not be using for street improvements. So essentially, there's five feet of excess right-of-way along the frontage. If you look at the aerial image that Nishant has up there, you'll see that there's actually a white picket fence along the front of the property, and that five feet of right-of-way is actually behind the fence. So in effect, it's already kind of been incorporated into the neighbors or the applicant's front yard. This would formalize that, and it would line it up. If you look to the property to the north, you can kind of see the edge between the concrete driveway and the asphalt. And so the new property line or the new right-of-way line would line up with that, as well as the, the curb on the property to the south. So this basically implements what the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan has authorized. Any other questions?
Sorry, Roger. So right-of-way means, so the property owner is getting five more feet or losing five?
They are getting five more feet. Normally, you know, if it wasn't in the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan, we would have the applicant build curb gutter and sidewalk. But because the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan states specifically that this section of Peggy Avenue will not have curb gutter and sidewalk, we only need the twenty-foot half-street or the full forty-foot right-of-way to encompass the road.
I heard, I heard you say that, but we know for sure that there'll never be another sidewalk.
The stamp has been an adopted, you know, document that, for twenty-plus years, and we've implemented vacations like this around the area, so realistically, it's probably not going to happen.
So I know we're matching the property to the north, but how about all the other properties on the street?
We, yeah, we, so we, the property owners have the choice of whether or not they want to go through the vacation process to reclaim some of that right-of-way. There's a cost associated with it. You have to hire a licensed land surveyor, make applications, so not everyone chooses to do that.
Thank you. I got it. Obviously, we're not debating this here, but would they have to bring this application back around if they did not get the right-of-way change?
Sorry.
They have to modify the application if they don't. What happens if they don't?
Yeah, so they, my understanding is they would have to modify probably just the layout of the building, maybe shift it five feet more towards the back of the lot just to achieve the same front setback, because their front setback is assuming that the vacation will happen.
Okay, so if that vacation is not approved, they would need to change the setbacks and reduce the size of the house a little bit.
Um, okay, I, I guess I was, I don't really want to dwell on this, but I, I thought there was, that we've, we've seen a situation where they were putting in a new house and that they were then required to put in a sidewalk in the Santa Moss area as a result of, of the fact that they were doing a new development.
So the MUNI code says that unless otherwise specified, when you build a new house, you responsible for doing frontage improvements like curb gutter sidewalk. Again, the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan identified this street, along with many other streets in the area, as just being pavement only, no curb gutter sidewalk.
It was kind of a selective thing. It doesn't apply to every ass, every area in Santa.
Exactly. It's street by street. So on our website, we have a map that shows which streets and what requirements. Some streets require curb and gutter for drainage purposes. Some streets require full curb gutter sidewalk, but it was, yeah, part of that plan.
So I guess one other question I have is, there's been a lot of talk, a lot of talk about the fact that Santa, the, the area plans that we have, which have a lot of subjectivity in them, going by the wayside at some point, would something like this be still in place if we were to do that?
Yes, our, our plan is long-term to have a master plan of street widths and required improvements for the entire city, just like we currently have one for the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan. We also currently have one for the Campbell Village Plan. And as part, as you're correct, as part of the requirement for objective standards, we're looking to have a plan that pretty much covers this entire city. So any potential applicant for a housing project could look at that plan and understand what is expected of them prior to making an application.
Thank you, Roger. So how does ADA then goes into this?
My, my understanding is ADA only applies if you have sidewalks for streets designated without sidewalks. It doesn't, it doesn't apply. Perhaps onsite, but if the, the street plan calls for no sidewalks, there's no way to, to accommodate that. That's why in a lot of these areas, you don't, you don't see wheelchair ramps at the corner either because there's no sidewalks to connect. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Anybody else have questions for staff? Um, uh, over here? No, no, no. Okay, um. Yeah.
So I also, something's wrong with my speaker.
I'm messaging our IT manager right now about, he has access to control the frequencies online. So I'm messaging him.
Hello.
I think we're good.
Well, okay, let's try this. So I also heard this item in CHARC, along with Commissioner Fields, and, and I thought it was a very good, no, no, this is feedback coming from Okay, so I, I also heard this item online on the CHARC, and, you know, I thought it was a, I thought it was pretty good design. It, you know, they feature, they use the feature of the land and the neighborhood very well, you know, so just want to make sure that I get that in. Thank you.
Okay, um, so I, I guess I had a couple little questions just because I, I didn't see it on the, on the, on the, on the drawings, and maybe I missed it. Um, uh, are, are there, are there fences designated for this property, for this, for this new house around, around it? And I didn't see anything in terms of walkways or anything that like go to the ADU. So I was just curious about whether that's in the design.
So there is fencing along the parcel already.
Talk up again.
There is fencing along the parcel already, and if you look over here, there is an entrance to the ADU on the, on the west side.
So is, is there fencing on three sides? Front, back and side? Back, the side and sides and back?
Correct, and, and there's fencing in the front as well, as, as Roger mentioned.
So the fence, the, the little thing that they got there now, that's going away?
So you mean right, like right over here?
Yeah, right, you know, there's a, there's a little picket fence or something in the front now.
Yeah, um, I'm not actually a hundred percent sure about that. There might be a question for the, the applicant to clarify.
All right. Anybody else? Anything? Okay, we can have the applicant speak if the applicant is here online, if they wish. Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Thank you. Um, I'm gonna open it to the public now. If there's anybody here that would like to speak on this item. Well, I, I think we do the applicant, right? Yeah, let's do the applicant. Um, is the applicant here? Would you like to come and speak? Yeah, like, uh, so our understanding, it was a little different than, okay, city, it gives my client five feet. The property line right now is at the center of the street, of the Peggy Street. So this is the survey shows, property line is at the center of the Peggy Street. So now the question is, are you gonna, are we gonna give city twenty feet or twenty-five feet? So at the end, public work, they accept twenty feet. So city doesn't give my client anything. So they, yeah, they, they could have asked twenty-five feet. Of course, then we have to push the building to the back because of the setback. But because it was before this project, it was many other projects that they, they want to follow it, so they accepted twenty feet from the center. Then this is the new property line, then setback starts from there. So those lines are not fences. It shows that, okay, where is the property line based on the survey, then twenty feet, then twenty-five feet, just to, for clarification, clarification. Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, one question.
Was the fact that this is a ministerial process, does your ADU factor in your decision?
ADU?
The accessory dwelling part of the application?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Was the, was the fact that adding an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit to the application, makes it ministerial, i.e. we can't deny it, was that a factor in you including an ADU in the application?
Yeah, ADU is, okay, it was some options. Right now, FAR is just thirty percent. We could have go second floor, make the first floor smaller without ADU, but neighborhood, mostly it was one story, it was some two stories. So we decided to make it one story, but to keep the coverage, you know that ADU is not part of the coverage. So we made it that we can use that exception. Then we don't, we didn't go to second floor.
So the motivation is that the ADU is exempt from the floor area ratio calculation?
Mostly coverage and setbacks. FAR still is thirty percent.
Right. Sorry, the, the lot coverage.
Yeah.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Thank you. Okay, um, do we have any, anybody else that would like to speak on this item in the audience or online? Okay, so I'll, I'll close the public and I'll go to comments. Adam, would you like to start?
Given that this should be ministerial and once staff makes the updates, this won't be coming before us, I don't have anything to add. Given that this should be ministerial and once staff makes the updates, this won't be coming before us, I don't have anything to add.
I'm okay with the project.
Yes, I also think it's a good project.
I support the project as well.
I support the project too. I just want to make the observation, like most of our questions were the same questions Commissioner Campcar and I asked two weeks ago with the applicant, with staff. We're, I feel like we're really duplicating SARC in the planning commission. And we should do something different than we're currently doing because it really feels like a waste of people's time. How we're doing this, and we have two more items that are going to be the same. Commissioner Campcar and I asked a lot of questions. You can see that we recommended approval. You all weren't there. You haven't, you're gonna, I I don't fault any of you for also asking similar questions then. But it just feels like an enormous waste of everyone's time how we set up SARC. So don't rat hole it on tonight, seven item agenda, but I want to put a stake in the ground that this feels like an opportunity to streamline things for the public, for staff of like, if it's going to come to planning anyway, we need to do something different with how we're treating this SARC. It just doesn't feel like a good use of.
One can chairs, this or this is all true, and I I think we might even get rid of SARC at some point. But what we've what we gotten away from for some reason is not asking for the SARC report before we do the comments. So we should ask for a SARC report. They can maybe bring up these issues and we won't have to. We'd still probably have to duplicate, but maybe not all. There's usually commentary in the agenda item. Yeah, yeah. Usually we ask the SARC people. We did in the past, we got in the way.
But I'm very supportive of the project.
All right, and yeah, I'm supportive of the project too, and your your points are well taken. Understand, I think, you know, there's a new day coming here, right? Because of of the change in the state laws and and moving towards some ministerial things. So it's 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 relatively new in in terms of all these things that have kind of come down to make that make a difference. So I guess we'll probably be looking at that kind of thing in future. In any case, I I do support the project as well, and saying that, we have a motion. Chair, I'll move approval that the planning commission adopt the resolution.
Chair, you didn't ask for comment from Commissioner Majewski?
Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Majewski, I'm sorry, we're we didn't include you in this. Would you, do you have any comments?
Thank you. No, I'm I'm good. I I agree with everything that was said.
Okay, thank you. So. And I'll just move that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving a site and architectural review permit PLN 2023-89 to allow the demolition of an existing thirteen thirty six square foot single family residence and the construction of a new approximately two thousand six hundred and twenty one square foot single family residence and finding the project category exempt under section fifteen three oh three of the California Environmental Quality Act for the home at the property located at thirteen sixty one Peggy Avenue. Second?
Second.
The motion is second. We have vote.
Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Strazki?
Aye.
Commissioner Cray?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Pastor Campcar?
One.
Aye.
Chair Caesar?
Aye. Yeah, passes the panel's lead. And moving to next item, item three on the agenda, one oh, one oh oh one Audrey Avenue. I'll be caring to consider, shall we make? I hope I bounce that right, to allow the demolition of an existing single family residence and detached garage and the construction of a new forty four hundred and ninety five square foot two story, single family home with attached two car garage, front rear covered porches on property located at one oh oh one Audrey Avenue. Application and consideration is a site and architectural review permit file number PLN two oh two four dash two six. Staff is recommending the site be categorized exempt from CECL. Planning Commission action is final unless the field been writing to the CECL within ten calendar days. Again, the project planner is in the shots, Seon. The shot.
Okay, sure. This project site is located along the north side of Audrey Avenue between Capri Drive and Burrows Road. It is a ten thousand nine hundred fifty square foot R one ten lot, also in the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan. It's currently developed with a single family home and detached garage that will both be demolished. The applicant will be building a new four thousand four hundred ninety five square foot home with attached two car garage and front and rear porches as shown in these renderings. Project conforms with all setback, FAR, lot coverage and height standards. Design is consistent with surrounding homes and will include a shingled hip roof, stucco siding and a movable rear glass wall. It also serves as a window and entrance. SARC reviewed the project on July ninth and recommended planning commission approval. Project is removing one unprotected tree, retaining nineteen trees and planting fifteen for for a total of thirty four. Trees will be at the front, rear and sides, and bushes will be at the front and rear. And regards to privacy, in response to a courtesy notice about the project that the city sent out to neighbors, one neighbor at one thousand one zero zero nine Audrey, immediately to the west, expressed concerns about impacts to privacy due to the the second story of this house. Staff explained to them that the project is consistent with allowed height and story standards and will also have multiple screening trees on all sides. That coupled with the window size and distribution, we believe that there won't be any privacy impacts to neighbors. Staff has made all necessary findings and is recommending approval of the project.
Okay. Questions for from the from the commission?
Do you want to ask for a SARC report first?
Do you want to ask for SARC report?
Oh, you want me to ask for SARC report? Okay.
Abort duplication of effort.
Okay. Who's gonna give us the SARC?
I can do it.
Okay.
We had several questions. We had, we had several questions as we had on these of like, well, help us understand why this particular property needs to come to SARC planning that were answered about just the neighborhood plan compliance and like what laws are triggering it. We had a discussion about the privacy impact because there was a neighbor. To my satisfaction, they talked about privacy trees going up, distances between properties that made us feel comfortable with what was being proposed that they had been thoughtful about the design.
All right.
Thank you.
And I can add on to that. One of the features that one of the features that was stayed in my mind on this project was that every requirement or conditions that was listed was met. Setback, floor area ratio. Some of them were not only met, they were exceeded, meaning that they did more than the city was asking, you know, and so. It just, to me, it was the, you know, it, I also wasn't sure why it came to SARC because there was no controversy. Thank you.
Okay, any questions from the commissioners to the planner? Commissioner Cray? Yeah, and the shot, just one question. I I don't know what we do in this situation. So the I guess it was the applicant's arborist report mentioned a tree on the neighboring property that had a severe lean, a coast live oak with a severe lean that the arborist said really should be taken down for safety reasons, but that's the neighboring property. What happens, do we follow up with anything like that or what happens with that?
I believe that's up to the neighbor. It's ultimately their property, their tree, so it's up to them to decide what they do with it. We we can't enforce that as part of this project.
We don't bring it up though, I'm I'm sorry. You don't bring it up with the neighbor or mention it or just?
Not that I'm aware of, but I I can check in on that and see what our process there is and let you know.
Question for the attorney. So if the leaning portion of a tree is comes over onto your property, then neighbor doesn't want it going to be well. My understanding is you could take that portion out to save your own house or structure.
That was the rule about twenty years ago. It's changed some. There's the courts who adopted a rule of reasonableness. Yet you can trim generally portions of a tree that come over onto your side, but you can't do so in a way that would damage the vitality of the tree.
Even if it's, even if it's leaning over your house?
Even if it's leaning over your house, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Corey? Corey, any questions?
I have a question that might be better for the applicant regarding the planting of, I think it was nineteen additional trees.
Okay. Wait for the.
Sure.
Okay. I just, first of all, I just, there's, I found a typo, I'm sorry. On page forty seven of the of the agenda, there's a, there's a no tape, this had came up once before where it's noted that they are west and east, the sides are west and east when they should be. The sides are are designated as north and south when they should be west and east because the map is, you know, possibly because the map is is rotated. And so it's incorrect the way it is. So just as a note. That was on page forty seven regarding the setbacks. So I I just want to confirm, I think, I think you covered it. But it it's been confirmed that the the sightlines with regards to windows facing facing neighbors is not a problem, that that's all been designed to make it suitable.
Correct, the majority of the second story is going to be screened by either existing or new trees.
Okay. Okay. All right, anybody else have any more questions? All right, applicant, applicant would like to speak. I'll I'll open up it for public. And you come up and state your name.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Archana. I'm the architect for the project. And I'm representing my clients, Shaleesh Naik and Manisha Jin. So we have just designed a basic home, two story home. The key issue that I have noted that in single story neighbors that they do have the privacy concerns. So we've kept most of the sill heights of the windows at five feet as well as only a two of them which are slightly bigger in the loft area and we provided privacy planting on both the sides. And in the red, the setback is, if it was in a regular Campbell lot, the depth of the property and the setback is equivalent to that. But still, we have privacy trees in the back and some of the existing oak trees are also being retained in the rear for privacy. And all the materials that we are using are also compatible with the neighborhood. The height setbacks are, the height is even lesser than what's allowed, setbacks are much more than what is allowed as well as even the lot coverage is lesser than the F R, are the lot coverage allowed? Any other questions? I'm here to answer.
Should we have any questions for the applicant? Corey, oh yeah, Corey.
Yeah.
Ask the applicant a question?
Yes, thank you for coming. I'm just curious how you arrived at that number of trees. Is it just for screening purposes?
It was for screening purposes. We had received a planning comment from the shots to provide the angle of the screening of every window. And even though the sill height was at five feet, we just decided to do both privacy screening as well as so that way the neighbor doesn't have any comments or issues with the privacy.
Gotcha, and I'm assuming you're choosing something that's appropriate for that.
The landscape architect did it, so I'm going to trust his experience.
Sure, gotcha. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, I I just have one question. Might have got answered at the last item, but this is, this is a not, one of those non sidewalk streets too. And so I think, I assume you're remaining, it's remaining as.
It is going to be like retained. We had checked with the public works. They said that we don't have to do any sidewalk or any improvements. It is an undeveloped road or whatever street I'll call it. So we'll just have like, you know, the driveway approach, that much will be asphalted. So that way at least it's convenient for the clients.
It's our rural looking. The rural one, okay. Thank you, thank you. Okay, do we have any, any other speakers who wish to speak on this item in the audience or online? Okay, I'll close a public portion and go to comments from commissioners. If you, if any of you have. Adam?
I have no comments. The main question was whether it applied Santa Moss area neighborhood plan. It sounds like it does. I have no further anything to add.
Thank you, sir. I'd say the project, it looks good. I like, I love the, I love all the trees and they really do work for privacy. Second stories, they work, work so well and also just so we all know, because we're all here, you know, these kind of items will not be coming to us. And we're kind of in a transition phase, so these kind of cursory items will not be coming to us much longer as if I understand it right. Good to know. Thank you.
Yes, I also thought it was a well designed project. You know, I really appreciated that, you know, all the city requirements were complied with with no asking for waivers or exceptions.
I'm supportive of the project.
Support of a project, one more reason I felt so strongly about SARC is our SARC meeting for this was four weeks ago because we couldn't do the noticing in time. So the very nice applicants waited a month to do this. Promise, I'm off the soapbox. Support of this project.
So you won't bring that up?
I reserve the right to do it one more time.
Okay, so my only comment is, is just, I actually lived on Audrey Avenue about forty some years ago. It's the first place I lived in in Campbell. I live about a couple of blocks down the street towards Burrows. So I I was, I had a chance to go by there, so it was kind of a walk down memory lane. And I'm familiar with the street and it's changed over the last forty years. And and the only comment I really want to make is for the person, the neighbor who's was saying that, you know, two story doesn't fit. I counted the least six homes in the next block that had two stories on it. And as probably most of you know, if you've been here for a while, that building two story homes next to single story houses has been going on for probably two, three, maybe three decades in Campbell. It's, it maybe at one time wasn't something that in terms of getting approval wasn't as likely, but today and and for some time going to two stories and now three stories is a a regular common occurrence in in all the neighborhoods. And this neighborhood does have multiple two story homes in in the, not right next door to this house, but but down the street. So it's, it's, it's not inconsistent with with the neighborhood anymore. And it's perfectly legal in terms of the codes of the city and and any state laws. So so two stories, we we tend, we tend to look at things like sightlines and those kind of things and 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 hopefully the landlords accommodate, the owners accommodate things in terms of placement of windows. But but that's pre-standard now. We had been on the commission for almost four years and we've seen multiple two story and a number of three story homes being placed in neighborhoods next to single story. So that's a common occurrence. And that's all I wanted to say about that. So let's do we, do I have a a motion? A motion? I'm having to move that the Campbell Planning Commission approve a site and architectural review permit to allow the demolition of the existing single family residence and detached garage and the construction of a new four thousand four hundred ninety five square foot, two story, single. and the construction of a new 4,495 square foot two-story single-family home with an attached two-car garage and front and rear covered porches on property located at 1001 Audrey Avenue. It's PLN 2024-26. Second?
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Davis. Can we have a vote?
Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Strasky?
Aye.
Commissioner Cray?
Aye.
Commissioner Bucklander?
Aye.
Pastor Kamkar?
Aye.
Chair Scissor?
Aye. It was. Okay. All right. Thank you for the patience, everybody. Um, item four on the agenda is 103 South First Street. Public hearing to consider the request of Edwin Bruce Associates on behalf of Caskel Properties to allow the replacement of siding material along with the installation of shade canopies over existing balconies for a duplex on property located at 103 South First Street. The application under consideration includes a site and architectural review permit. File number PLN 2024-64. Staff is recommending the sign be deemed categorically exempt from CECL. Plant, uh, Planning Commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within 10 calendar days. Project planner is Larissa Lohman. Larissa?
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Larissa Lohman. I'm an assistant planner and I will be presenting item four, which is a site and architectural review permit, uh, for property located at 103 South First Street. Uh, the project is located at 103 South First Street, uh, in a zone plan development and covers approximately 4,000, sorry, 5,417 square feet. The existing structure is a duplex surrounded by single-family residential homes to the north and west and higher density housing to the east. The application proposes several exterior updates, including replacing the existing stucco finish with hardy lapped siding combined with brick veneer, uh, adding lightweight translucent canopies over the existing balconies and updating balcony railings and side property line fences with new materials as further described on this slide. Here you can see the comparison between the existing and proposed facade. Uh, the changes aim to enhance the building's aesthetic and functionality, maintaining consistency with the surrounding neighborhood's character. The proposed facade updates will improve the building's appearance. The new materials will provide a modern look and these translucent canopies will enhance the balcony's usability. Uh, updated railings and fences will also improve safety and visual appeal. Uh, the project was also reviewed by the Site and Architectural Review Committee on June 11th, uh, 2024. Uh, the committee discussed the applicable, the application in the context of the zoning codes, development standards and neighborhood compatibility. And the SARC supported the application as presented. For this reason, the SARC recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving a site and architectural review permit, uh, PLN 2024-64 for these proposed exterior updates. Uh, this concludes my presentation. I can now take questions at this time.
Can we, uh, okay, I'm going to catch it now. Yeah. Uh, is, is anybody from the SARC committee like to report on this beyond what Larissa said?
Um, thanks staff for the report. Um, the main discussion we had was, as uh, Larissa mentioned, it was just sort of on compatibility. Uh, we, we basically asked a question on one of the visuals. Did the balconies get any bigger? Because it sort of looked bigger in one of the photos, but confirmed it did not. This is purely sort of surface level, uh, aesthetic changes, uh, that we were very supportive of and felt like a really nice upgrade to property that's adjacent.
Um, and you, and I think that that's mostly it. And the only thing I can add is that it was a pretty arch-shaped lot and it was a very nice design, um, to, within that arch-shaped lot, you know, I know most of the, um.
Yes. Yes, I'm working, baby.
Most of the proposals are just, uh, aesthetics, you know, but I just want to say they made that arch-shaped lot look really good, you know, in the neighborhood.
Hmm. Just want to be with daddy.
Somebody's mic is on.
Okay, um. Let's see, we're all, um.
So you got your comments from SARC. You got your report from SARC.
Okay, so we got questions for, uh, anybody have questions for staff on this? Uh, Corey, why don't we start with you if you have a question?
Um, this might be explained, but can we expand a little about why this is coming to the planning commission?
Uh, yes. Uh, as further described in the staff report, our current administrative procedure would be to take this item before for a site and architectural review permit. Uh, the property was currently under a previous entitlement, a P D permit for plan development. This is considered a legacy permit as of our zoning code update in June of last year, 2023. Uh, for this reason, we don't have a current mechanism to update these legacy permits. So uh, as the applicant wanted to modify the exterior without a, uh, provision to modify legacy permit, uh, staff moved forward with taking this proposal under a new site and architectural review permit uh, to, uh, create a new entitlement for the property, although the only modifications would be to the exterior. Uh, as, uh, Commissioner Fields mentioned, uh, no structural modifications are occurring as part of this proposal. And it's further described here on the screen and in the staff report.
Thank you.
So future changes would not require a new site and architectural review permit?
Currently, the zoning code required, uh, does not have a mechanism that allows any type of, uh, modification to these legacy permits. So as we no longer have a provision for plan development permits or P D permits.
Right. That's why it's here now. But if they want to make another change to it at some point in the future, will that also come back to us?
Uh, staff is currently working on, uh, changes to the zoning code as part of a forthcoming, uh, ordinance update to allow for these types of legacy changes. But at this time, there is, uh, we, there is nothing, uh, within the zoning code that would allow, uh, modification.
Okay, so future modifications would also require another site and architectural review permit?
Until the zoning code is updated.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Cray? Commissioner Bucklander? Okay. Okay, yeah, I, uh, I always usually have questions about everything, but but I don't think I have it, uh, this. Okay. Okay, so I, I'm sure you guys are happy about that. Um, so, uh, let's see, we'll go to, um, the, the public hearing and if we have, uh, the applicant here who would like to speak?
My name is Edwin Bruce. This is Char, uh, Charlotte Chama. And we are the architects for the project and we're just here to answer any questions if you have.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Okay, um, yeah, you know, we're, we're no longer in terms of subject, subjective things. We're not really in, in the, the, able to do that, but I just, out of curiosity, I, I've walked by that place many times and since I live in a downtown area. Um, the decision to, to use the, um, the gray, the gray brick exterior, just, I'm just curious from a, you know, it's all a matter of, you know, subject taste. I was just curious as to, uh, what the thinking was in terms of matching up to, uh, uh, the area.
The, the gray brick?
Yeah, the gray brick.
Gray and white brick? Well, we're trying to find some sort of balance between making this contemporary, but still making it blend in with the surrounding neighborhood. I mean, there's a very traditional feel for that area, almost industrial to some degree. Um, so we're trying to sort of walk this fine line between upgrading it to something nice and modern and new and crisp and clean. But still get some of the elements of the old, older buildings. There's a brick building across the street from us. There's some down the street from us. So we wanted to use brick, but we didn't definitely want to use red brick or something that tradition. So like I said, we're trying to walk that fine line. Okay.
Thank you. I don't think we have any more questions. Thank you very much. Do we have any, um, buddy in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Or online? Uh, Corey, did I, did I ask you? I forgot. You're the first one up?
I'm good. Thank you.
You're good? Okay, um, anybody?
I just wanted to clarify, Tom Wagner, if you wanted to speak on this item or the following item? Okay, thank you.
No? No? Okay. All right. So, um, I'll close the public hearing and go to Commissioners for any comments. Any, have any comment?
I can make a motion.
If there's no comment, we'll take a motion.
I, I'll just, sorry. Similarly, um, as I understand it, this should not be coming to us and it's simply the staff has not yet completed making a code update. So I would feel uncomfortable making comments on this because this should not be coming to us.
All right. With that, I'll make a motion to adopt a, uh, resolution reference attachment one approving a site and architectural review permit, PLN 2024-64 to allow the replacement of siding material along with the installation of shade canopies over existing balconies and entitle an existing duplex on property located at 103 South First Street and finding the project categorically exempt under section 15303 of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion as second. Can we have a vote?
Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Strasky?
Aye.
Commissioner Cray?
Aye.
Commissioner Bucklander?
Aye.
Pastor Kamkar?
Aye.
Chair Scissor?
Aye. Okay, it, it passes unanimously. Uh, thank you, uh, thank you planner woman.
Larissa.
And, uh, I know. And, uh, thank you to the applicant. Good luck.
Thanks.
Okay, it's a big one. Uh, can we take a three-minute break? Can we take a three-minute break? Okay, we're just gonna take a very short break. The call's back into order. I, I apologize because I failed to, um, ask about, um, if any Commissioners have any disclosures tied. So I apologize for that. So, but I'd like to do that now, especially with Virginia Avenue coming up. So, uh, any disclosures from Commissioners?
I did visit all our sites.
Okay. Anybody else?
I visited the Virginia Avenue site.
Okay.
I walked by Virginia, found my way from Johnny Morgan.
Commissioner Kamkar?
Uh, no disclosures.
I've frequently been, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
I've frequently been to El Guapos.
Okay, um, I, I, I visited, uh, the Penny, Penny Way, uh, the Penny Avenue, the Audrey Avenue and the Virginia site, uh, uh, as well as walking around the exterior of El Guapos. And just before the meeting, I actually, uh, had a conversation that did not get involved in the issues, but with some people who were here. that did not get involved in the issues, but with some people who were here early for regarding the Virginia site and I introduced myself and we just had a general conversation that really didn't um involve anything specific about the uh, the issue. So um, with that uh, publicly, I think consider the application by Valeo Partners on behalf of VOP uh, for Virginia, I'll see to allow the construction of forty unit uh, forty unit townhome style condominium units in creation of six private lots and non-common lots with associated site improvements, use of density bonus law waivers and concession from the zoning code and multifamily development design standards on property located three twenty Virginia Avenue. The application under consideration includes a minor housing development project permit and tentative vesting subdivision map with use of density bonus law submitted under SB three thirty preliminary application filed in compliance with government code six five nine four one dot one. File, file number PLN two oh two three dash one fifty seven. Staff is recommending this item to be categorized exempt from CEQA. Planning Commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within ten calendar days. Project planner is Tracy Tam. Tracy?
Uh, thank you. Tracy Tam, project planner. Um, I also want to note that we do have we do have public work staff in the audience tonight. Um, we also do have applicant representatives here in, in the council chambers and also um, on Zoom as well. Uh, so the project site is located at three twenty Virginia Avenue. Um, it is a currently vacant site that was formerly owned and operated by the San Jose Water Company as a water well site. It was subsequently purchased by Valeo Partners, um, who's on Zoom, online Zoom. Um, the zoning and general plan is designated medium density residential, which generally allows for eighteen to twenty-five dwelling units per the, to the acre. Um, but I will note that policy um, H dash one dot four in the housing and, and the city's adopted housing element does require seventy-five percent of the max density for housing opportunity sites, which means that because this site is a housing opportunity site under the housing element, the minimum density is eighteen point seven five dwelling units uh, to the acre. Um, so I do want to speak about uh, the public notice. There were two public notices that were mailed out. Um, the city does notify property owners within a three hundred foot buffer. Um, and as we see on the screen there, the map has all the properties highlighted um that the notice was mailed to. So the project before you tonight is a minor housing development project, um, which does encompass forty townhome style condominium units um, and a tentative subdivision map which proposes six residential lots and nine common lots um, to allow for the private streets, blockways, open open space, et cetera. Uh, the project is also a density bonus project. And while the applicant isn't requesting any kind of additional density, they are requesting twenty-seven waivers and one concession um, and reduce parking ratios as allowed by state density bonus law. Um, so what you see on the screen is the site layout. Um, there are six buildings proposed. Each building contains about six to seven residential units. Each unit does have a two-car garage on the ground floor, either side by side or um, tandem, so front and back. Um, the development is centered around a common open space which faces Virginia Avenue. Um, and it does contain some seating areas, bicycle parking and a playground. Um, this open space is intended for the residents of this development. Um, and the surface parking spaces you see on the side there and throughout the site are intended to be visitor parking spaces. Um, so these are the two style of townhome styles condominiums. Um, you can see one, they're relatively same shape with the um, same sort of roof line, but the exterior material and colors do vary a little bit. Um, the buildings that are proposed are a little under thirty-seven feet tall and are three stories. Um, and the exterior materials are generally comprised of siding material, um, stucco and some masonry veneer, um, both with composition shingle roofs. Um, just to speak on the city's inclusionary housing ordinance, um, the house inclusionary housing, housing ordinance requires fifteen percent of the units to be for below market rate. And using a base unit of forty units, this equates to six units. Um, of the six units, three are going to be designated for low income and then three are going to be designated for moderate income. And then the specific units which will be designated at the uh, two income categories can be shown on the slide with sort of the salmon color being the low income units and then the yellow color being the moderate income units. So I mentioned earlier that the project is a density bonus project, um, and therefore is eligible to receive uh, to request waivers, um, unlimited waivers and one concession. Um, and in addition to that, reduced parking standards. Um, while the developer is not requesting an increase in density, um, they are requesting, as mentioned, twenty-seven waivers and one concession and the reduced parking standards allowed by density uh, bonus law. Um, so due to density bonus law, the city is prohibited from requiring more parking spaces than the parking standards as you see on the slide there. Um, in this case, the applicant is voluntarily providing more parking than what is required by density bonus law. Um, I will also note that due to semi-recent case law, um, in twenty twenty-two, the bank specifically the Bankers Hill versus the City of San Diego, the city is severely limited in rejecting waiver requests. Um, specifically that case established that when an applicant has requested a waiver um, and or a concession, the city may not apply any development standard that would physically preclude the construction of that project as designed, even if uh, the project includes like amenities beyond the bare minimum um, of the building components. And so the requested waivers and the concession are documented in attachment C of your planning commission packet. Um, I will also note that the applicant has um uh, requested a waiver from the adjacency standards, um, which would have otherwise required a stepping down of height, um, given to certain um uh, property lines. So due to the um, housing crisis in the state of California, um, the legislatures have passed a variety of laws to encourage the development of housing and really restricting the city's review and certain kind of housing projects. Um, and so the two laws worth mentioning here are the Housing Accountability Act and the Housing Prices Act. Um, the Housing Accountability Act, HAA for short, um, does limit the city's ability to deny, reduce um, or uh, reduce the density specifically, um, or render infeasible unless the project is found to be in violation and of, of an objective standard. Um, so I do want to emphasize that word, objective um, standard. Of course, other than those um, waived or utilizing a concession for uh, through the density bonus law. Um, or if the project will result in a specific adverse um, impact to public health and safety. Um, these impacts to public health and safety must be documented and is generally a pretty high bar to meet. I do want to make a specific mention that the Housing Accountability Act requires the project to be reviewed by objective standards, I did pause on the word before, um, and therefore subjective standards such as neighborhood character unfortunately can't be a criteria for a project evaluation. Now, to speak to the Housing Prices Act, um, the Housing Prices Act does allow um, a lock-in of standards by vesting, by a vesting uh, pre-application process. And so the applicant um, has locked in their standards and that means that the applicant can only be held to the standards in effect at the time the preliminary application was filed. Um, and so the applicant is locked into um, the stormwater provisions under the prior regional permit and also the fees associated um, that were ineffective at the time the, the pre-app was filed and paid for. And just to note here that the project um, does result in a density that is consistent with the general plan. I had mentioned earlier that the minimum density is eighteen point seven five units to the acre. Um, and the applicant is proposing around nineteen point uh, two-two units to the acre. Uh, so the project was evaluated under the California Environmental Quality, Quality Act or CEQA for short. Uh, the city did hire an environmental consultant, um, who's available on Zoom uh, to evaluate the project's impacts. Um, and through that review, it was found that the project can qualify for a categorical exemption, um, with the two exemptions noted on the slide. As part of this analysis, um, there were several technical studies that were prepared. Um, and that includes a noise study, greenhouse gas, air quality study, transportation analysis. Um, and it was determined that the inclusion of several design features uh, into the project, uh, the project can be considered exempt under CEQA. And those specific um, project design features can be found in the um, in the plan set, which is attachment B in your packets. The transportation analysis did determine that the proposed project is presumed to have a less than significant impact under the city's vehicle miles traveled policy or VMT for short. Um, the transportation analysis also did conduct a traffic study analysis, um, which as part of that um, study, it did evaluate site um, access and circulation issues, um, a site distance review, um, and then reviewing of the intersection driveway spacing and the driveway queuing. And the transportation analysis did conclude that the project would be adequately served by the two proposed driveways, um, going off of Virginia. And the spacing between those driveways would be free and clear of any kind of obstructions to ensure that the vehicles can see pedestrians um, walking on the sidewalk. Um, the uh, noise study did identify some project features um, related to impacts, noise impacts during construction, which includes um, limiting hours of operation for construction, a designated uh, noise coordinator amongst other measures. Um, so staff did receive public comment on the project, um, both when the courtesy notice, the first notice went out, uh, when the project was submitted, um, and also the notice for this public hearing tonight. Um, the slide here um, summarizes the uh, topics or the kind of public comments that were received on the project. Um, now some uh, public comments um, were included in the packet, however, since there were other public comments that were submitted and received after the packet publication, those have been included in um, a desk item memorandum, which has been distributed to the commission. Okay, I did address a couple of these comments um, in the presentation already, but I do want to speak to comments that I haven't yet addressed. Um, so regarding the impact to solar generation, power generation, I say to solar panels, um, the California Solar Shade Control Act does provide very limited protections um, from shading caused by specifically trees and shrubs on adjacent property. Unfortunately, it doesn't speak to structures um, reducing the efficacy of solar panels. And furthermore, the city does not have any regulations which were, which would provide further protection and to existing um, solar panels. Uh, regarding the impacts to parks, the city does have a park in Lufi that is uh, collected by the Department of Public Works. Um, for this project, it's a little under twenty thousand dollars a unit, which is a little over uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the project. And the city did receive um, a letter of support, um, and another letter citing state law. And with that, um, based on affirmative determination of the required findings associated with the minor um, housing development project permit, the tentative subdivision act, uh, density bonus and CEQA, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving the forty unit housing development project. And this does uh, concludes staff's presentation. Um, if you have any questions, like I said, we have public, uh, public work staff in our audience tonight and the applicant um, team, both in person and on Zoom.
Thank you. Chris. Thank you. Um, questions for Tracy? Mr. Field?
Um, in terms of the traffic study, what, what is the sort of minimum threshold for a project that would require a traffic study and how close or far is this project from that threshold?
So the city has a VNT, an adopted VNT policy, um, which there are certain screening criterias. And so the screening criteria that will be applicable in this case is the small project screening and, and which, what that means is that a development would generate fewer than a hundred and ten daily trips. Um, and if a project does generate less than a hundred and ten daily trips, the project is presumed to have a less than significant transportation impact. And so this project does fall below that threshold. It doesn't generate uh, more than a hundred and ten daily trips.
And like the, the num, is there an average number of daily trips per house that I'm assuming is like less than three? Like what, what is the average number of daily trips per house that we use generally, just to get a ballpark sense?
So this project, um, based on the uh, transportation memorandum, that's part of the CEQA documentation that was linked in the staff report, um, just so everyone knows where to find it. Um, the project is anticipated to generate nineteen, hold on a sec. Uh, nineteen trips in the AM peak and then twenty-three trips in the PM uh, peak hour.
So just confirm, so that's roughly forty? And the hundred and ten that you mentioned, is that about peak? You that's total in a day? I'm just, how clo, how close was this project to the? How many total, if it's a hundred and ten, how many total trips?
Right, it's, it's a hundred and ten uh, daily.
Yeah.
So let me just pull up the transportation memorandum, unless um, Pat or Molly, if you have that handy, those are just our environmental consultants.
Matthew. Please.
We have Matthew here, who is our traffic engineer.
Yes.
Hi, uh, Matthew Ju from uh, Traffic Engineering. There are two, there are two kinds of uh, traffic studies we're talking about. One for CEQA, it's um, besides the small project uh, criterion, there's also um, I guess consistency with the general plan and that uh, the scale of growth falls within what was analyzed as part of the general plan update, EIR. And uh, the project is consistent with the general plan VNT policy. So in that case, it was exempt from any VNT analysis. Uh, the other type of transportation analysis, what, what we call local transportation analysis, we used to call it like level of service, if we recall. There are two criteria. One is VTA uses um, one hundred peak hour trips generated as a threshold. And what Tracy was mentioning is for the AM peak, we're only generating nineteen trips as opposed to a hundred. And for the PMP- And for the P M peak, it's a twenty-three peak hour trips. So we're well below the threshold that V T A uses for requiring our transportation uh analysis.
Yeah, that was the core of my question. We just, I I noticed several public comment sort of saying they'd like to see that and I wanted to understand uh how close this project was to that threshold. Um, that was my main question.
Uh, Corey, do you have any questions?
I do not at this time, thank you.
Want to wait?
So just for staff, uh remind me, what is our inclusionary uh required inclusionary zoning percentage for this type of project?
Uh fifteen percent of the base units.
Okay, so any project like this is going to have the option for unlimited waivers?
That's correct. Um, essentially, every project that is subject to the inclusionary housing ordinance um is a density bonus project.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
All right, yeah, is it unlimited waivers?
That's correct. It's unlimited waivers in this particular project is allowed one concession um which they are using.
Sorry, what's the distinction between a concession and waiver?
Yes, a concession is uh something that is used. The uh, see if I I remember the distinction, but anyway, a waiver is for something that physically would preclude the development of the project. A concession is for something that would be essentially uh would increase the cost of uh providing the uh of doing the project such that it would impact the um a lot, the the provision of the affordable units.
Okay, and I have one just broader question also for our city attorney. Um, just I saw there were a lot of, I get the impression there were a lot of concern or negative comments. Um, what is the city's liability if knowing that our obligations under state law, if we choose to deny the project?
If you chose to deny the project, uh, well, it depends on the ground that you choose to deny the project on, but if the project complies with all of our objective requirements and uh you choose to deny it because it's a density bonus project or because uh you don't agree with the waivers or the concessions, then uh we would be subject to lawsuit by the developer who could essentially uh uh force us to reconsider that position. And if we didn't, then the court could order us to reconsider the denial.
Thank you.
I I, yeah, so I guess I would, I'm still, so so all those multifamily design standards that we worked on, uh, you know, including the adjacency standard, I know that was a big one we talked about, but that that really has no bearing on any uh density bonus project, right? So I'll answer. Obviously, the community board director, un- under state law, we're required only to apply objective standards to housing and the whole purpose of us developing those objective standards is to make clear developers what our objective design standards are. We spent a year and a half on those. A lot of developers we're still working with. I'll say in that same period, this court case did come out, the one referenced by Tracy, uh which made a decision, if you are a density bonus project, uh you can claim, as the attorney said, unlimited waivers uh to exempt yourself from objective design standards. And the bar is low, it's as your project is designed. So that that is the court case today. I'm I'm, there might be challenges in the future to that. Um, those are the facts. I I think our staff tries to work with our developers to say these are important to Campbell, but we are limited by that court decision. Well, let me, let me ask you this, and maybe Rob or maybe Tracy, uh, on a specific one that neighbors have brought up too, so. So I guess this actually was a CEQA study. In terms of neighbors, if if the three-story building or or however, it's many stories, if it blocks a neighbor's solar, apparently that's not, there's nothing that we can do about that.
Right, the um the act that I had cited earlier um comes into play when there are trees and shrubs on adjacent properties, um but it doesn't speak to structures or anything else.
So that's, maybe that's not, an un- maybe that's an unknown part of the law at this point. It doesn't speak to structures.
Um, well, it does um severely limit in the sh- uh the the shading that can occur based on trees and shrubs. And so that was decided via court case as well.
Yeah, but not buildings.
It doesn't mention anything in the law about uh buildings or structures.
Okay, that, I'm so put you, in terms of this project, did we or did CEQA, did they actually look to see if the buildings has designed are gonna, are actually going to block any of the solar installations on any of the neighboring houses? Maybe not.
So um while the uh reduction of efficacy to solar panels isn't a CEQA issue, um unfortunately, staff did not look into the matter as the city does not have an objective standard that speaks to that.
Okay, that's right, and I, I think, and it sounds like, you know, why would we? Because it's not an issue that we could deal with. Uh, just a couple other quick things. Uh, so then in terms of the parking, so the amount of parking they're putting in is above the uh density bonus law standard, I guess, or whatever you said, but it's it's also less than we would have required in the past. Is that true?
Um, correct.
Okay. Uh, and you know, do you know how long ago San Jose Water sold that property?
Um, the, I believe the applicant who's on Zoom can probably better answer that question than I can.
Okay, uh, so my question then for you is though, uh, San Jose Water is a public agency, did they first have to look into, they first have to offer that property to a nonprofit housing developer before a for-profit?
Uh, that I'm not sure. Unfortunately, I don't have the answer to that.
We don't know about that. Okay, we can ask, we can ask the applicant. Uh, and then my final question is just I, eh eh, technical, in terms of a minor housing development and a ma- I know the Llewellyn project with a hundred and eight units was major. This one with forty units is minor. Uh, I take it that it's the number of units that makes the difference and the practical difference is that a a minor project can be, is approved by the planning commission and less appealed and a major one is goes to the city council regardless?
Right, uh, that's correct. A major, I'm sorry, a a major housing development project permit is required to go to the city council for approval. Um, a minor housing development project permit is required to go to the planning commission for approval. Um, and it's not necessarily the number of units, but rather the major housing development project permit um kicks in when it's considered a large site or if there's any kind of form-based zone changes that are proposed. And so in the example of Llewellyn, um that is considered to be a large site, and so that project was uh required to go to council for decision. Whereas uh three twenty Virginia is not considered to be a large site. It doesn't meet the criteria for a large site and therefore the decision rests at the planning commission.
But large, large seems subjective. Is there a, is there an objective standard for that?
There is. Um, so in the M F D D S, a large site, I believe, is generally considered to be, oh, yeah, there's a criteria which it has to meet. It's not just a, it's not just based on acreage, but also is based on um length of site too. So I believe it's five acres, um, seven hundred feet in width, um or if there, if it's a through lot, um and there's a couple other criteria that would apply, but unfortunately, this doesn't hit any of the criteria.
Oh, fine, yeah. Thank you very much, Tracy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so uh my question is for the traffic engineer, if we got uh Matt. I'm sorry, uh, is this better?
Yes.
Okay, so my question is for uh traffic engineer. Thank you, Matt. Um, uh, so uh, as you know, I'm also civil engineer. I'm supposed to know these laws, but here sitting, I'm I'm a planning commissioner, so I want to ask a layman's question. So if there are forty units and let's say two people per unit, we know that it takes two incomes to make everything work, so two people have to work, you know, um. Forty times two is eighty trips going and coming back, so a hundred sixty, you know, even if somebody, you know, works from home and doesn't go out every day, you know, is remote. I'm I'm having trouble understanding why is the total forty-three, why nineteen and twenty-three is forty-two, you know? So how do we come up with forty-two trips when practically it's probably more like a hundred twenty, a hundred fifty?
The explanation is not everybody leaves in the same hour. So it's it's the peak hour, however many trips are coming in and out of this site.
So that hundred ten threshold is the peak, is not the total trips, because
the CE, the CEQA, a hundred and ten daily trip for a small project, that's daily trips.
Well, that is total.
For entire day.
And that's going and coming back. It it counts as two.
Right, and that's correct.
Okay, so.
Look, I'm I'm looking at the um environmental, sorry, I'm looking at the environmental report. I'm on page three sixty-two. Um, I think it says daily rate is estimated as seven point two trips per unit for a total of two hundred and eighty-eight daily trips. The total, you're just counting peak hour trips, not total trips during the day.
Right. For CEQA analysis, we were using first was mentioned, a hundred and ten daily trips for small projects are screened out of V M T analysis. But in our case, it was more, the reason was consistency with the general plan, the I R. For local transportation analysis, the old level service analysis, we're using the peak hour trip generation. In this case, V T A uses a hundred uh peak hour trips. And what the environmental uh analysis showed was the peak hour trip generation for the A M peak hour was nineteen for the P M twenty-three. That's well below a hundred.
Okay, that may, that that may, I hope that answered your question. That makes sense.
It does. Thank you.
Ed?
Do you have any?
Can I go, can I go the other way? Okay, uh, Corey, did I call you?
You do. You have a question for the applicant.
Okay, that's, so I'm the only one left? Um, so um before I ask a question, I just want to make a statement. Um, I'm concerned about the fact that we got this uh uh, we we got this rather complicated, what I believe is a fairly complex um development that comes in front of us for the first time tonight, you know, and we get these things on Friday and it's part of a really big agenda. So I I'm I'm concerned that the, that the planning commission doesn't have enough time to review this in depth to do the right thi- to 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 be able to review it, ask the right questions and um come to some conclusion if we're going to take a vote. So uh, that said, I I want to also, I want to ask first of all, and I I I sent an email to you in advance, um, why this didn't come to us. Uh, we we have consistently gotten uh a review of a pre-application on fairly substantial uh developments of anywhere from uh less than ten units to up to three hundred units. And this did not come in front of us in advance of tonight for us to take a preliminary real view of this, even though this was noticed noticed back in September to the residents, I believe it's almost a year. So there's been some design around for quite some time that the planning commission didn't get a chance to take a look at this in advance and review and and comment on it. So I I, my question to you uh is why, why was that the case? Uh, and um, you know, I asked you this question in advance, so I I'll I'll allow you to answer it.
And so the preliminary application that was submitted um was to lock in standards using S B three thirty. Um, the code does have, the code does have certain criteria in which the pre-application is required to go to the planning commission or the city council. Um, and so unfortunately, the project didn't meet the um the threshold um to be brought to planning commission for review. Um, I will say that presently in our code, um, the two uh thresholds that we have that would require planning commission review of the pre-application is a non-residential building that exceeds uh twenty thousand square feet and and it's located adjacent to existing residential uses. That's one threshold. Uh, the second threshold is non-residential projects resulting in a sub- substantial fiscal impact uh to the city. And so because the project at three twenty Virginia didn't meet either two uh thresholds because it is a residential project, it was not forwarded to the planning commission for review.
Did you say uh next to residential or non-residential?
Uh, so that would be non-residential building that's more than twenty thousand square feet in size, that's located next to existing residential uses.
It it seemed, it seems inconsistent with what we've seen come before us before. Um, uh, so I have a specific question about the um the fact that this is doing, being done on the S B three thirty. So it's my, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but the S B three thirty is the builder's remedy, is it not? What's considered the builder's remedy?
No, uh, the builder's remedy is a separate set of law. Um, S B three thirty is, um, I think it's the Housing Crisis Act, which is pretty broad in and of itself.
Okay, so this is not a builder's remedy?
No, it's not. It was submitted after the adoption of the general plan, housing element, um, M F D D S.
S thirty-five then? What's 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 the builder's?
No, it's a, I don't even think it, it's, it's been in law for a long time.
I know.
Yeah, the builder's remedy is actually part of the Housing Accountability Act, but it was amended under the Housing Crisis Act, so you may be partially right.
Okay, that's right. Um, I thought I looked it up and it said it was the builder's remedy. Um, because my question would have been, if it was a builder's remedy, wh- why are we doing waivers based on the M, uh, the new standards, which would have, if it were builder's remedy, we would have been doing it on the old standards. So any waivers would have been been taken from uh previous standards rather than the new M F T stuff. But I guess it doesn't apply. I guess, I guess we're not doing a builder's remedy here. So um, I have a, I have a question about okay, so on all the waivers, the the response to to by the developer is this standard would have effect of physically precluding the construction of the development as designed. That's basically, I don't know if it's every single of the twenty-seven waivers, but it's almost all of them. That that's what the re- the reasoning is. So so my question is, if if they uh, this, is this uh, this standard would have effect of physically precluding the construction of the development as designed, does the developer have to provide proof of that? And if he does have to provide proof, uh, what kind of proof does he have to provide? That that this is not feasible?
Uh, well, the city is precluded from asking for any kind, due just to to case law, the city is precluded from asking the developer to provide any kind of financial or fiscal analysis, um noting that if they don't get away from the standard, it'll cost them X dollars. Um, and I believe that was done by the, because another case law, not the Bankers' Hill case, um, but the city can't ask for any kind of financial substantiation that the standard would cost the project X more dollars to implement the standard. Um, in the Bankers' Hill case, um, because the case ruled that you can't deny waivers based on the project as You can't deny waivers based on the project as, uh, designed, um, the. The, that language presently is, uh, quite honestly, pretty powerful, um, and its application. And so there isn't a lot of proof or, um, you know, substantial evidence that the city can request the developer to provide on that front.
What? Sure, okay. Hopefully that's soon. Um, so I, I, I do have a question about the not doing underground utilities. Um, so, uh. You know, there, there are, I'm not exactly sure, uh, we've only run into not underground utilities a couple other times and it was more straightforward. Um. And, and you know, actually the developer told if they did underground utilities, it would cost them almost a million dollars. So, um, they made a justification in that case. Um, so I, I want to understand what that means in practical sense is for the development. There are, there are presently, um, poles along the street, okay? Now, does that mean that they wouldn't have to take those poles down? Or is that, is that what it's about, or, or, and, and then if you leave the poles up, then they take the power from the poles and go in. Underground from that point to the development, could you explain that?
Yes, absolutely, um, so the undergrounding of utilities, uh, the developer is utilizing their one concession to be exempt from that requirement. Um, in their documentation for the waivers and concessions, um, they did note the costs associated with that. Um, they do want to mention that that was a voluntary measure to include costs, the city didn't require them to provide a cost to substantiate, um, their concession. Um, if, since the developer is using their concession to, um. Be exempt from the undergrounding request, that does mean that developer is not required to take out any of the poles. Um, I believe there will be a shifting of one of the guy wires of the poles, because it's in the proposed driveway. In which the developer will be working with PG&E on that item, um, but essentially the poles would be left, um, as you see today.
Okay, and there's, there's not going to be additional utility poles within the development?
No.
All right. Um. You have a question?
I said one more thing, I noticed that some of the public comments had expressed concern about, uh, traffic on Virginia Avenue. Um, did you let the people who'd asked about that know about our neighborhood traffic calming program?
That's right, there is a neighborhood traffic calming program, I'm not sure if our public work staff, um, would like to speak to that further.
There is a council-approved neighborhood traffic calming program, you can find it on our website. Google Campbell NTCP, NTCP for Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. It should be the first link that, that shows up, uh, but it's a very, a step-by-step process that can guide. A neighborhood through, um, whether a street is eligible for traffic calming.
Thank you. I, I, I would add that, because we just went over this in a, at a last, uh, another development that, that, um, the traffic control. The, the traffic calming program would come after the development is in. Because then it would make sense to take a look at the traffic after the fact, right? And then, and then the, the neighbors would have to request this calming program through, to the city, which is outlined in the website, right?
True.
Okay. Thank you. Um. Yeah, I, uh, go ahead.
Um, Tracy, I was curious, um, when you were working with the developer on this, is there any discussion about? That open space lot, which is great for the residents to move it towards the back? To alleviate some of the concerns from the neighbors behind the development and also. That would create a, um, safer area for the children and toddlers, because they wouldn't be playing right next to the street.
Um, so when the application was formally submitted to the city for review, the configuration, the site layout in which you see today. With the common open space, uh, facing, is adjacent and facing Virginia Avenue was already proposed. Um, I understand that there might have been a prior iteration of the project, um, which was not under staff review. Which had the open space, uh, towards the rear of the development, um, but unfortunately, um, I didn't see such proposal. I will, as it was before, the developer had formally submitted to the city.
And because of that and the other discussions we've had, there's not any option to recommend any changes.
Unfortunately not, um, since something like that would be considered as subjective standard, um, and the city is only limited to imposing objective standards to the development.
Objective standards that aren't, um, excuse me. I'm sorry? The objective standards, but only if the applicant doesn't seek the, a waiver of those.
That's correct.
I have another question, uh, relevant to that, um. And I, I guess I, I want to know whether or not the city brought this up with the, uh, developers. So, so this has a, uh, a, a little park in the front, okay? And so developments that we've had in the city, uh, that are near or adjacent to parks. Have generally been where we. Don't have as much green space in, on the development, you know, whether it's by the, you know, the, the, the trail area, the Campbell Park area. Or, or any else, anyplace else where it would be adjacent to a city park. It, it's my impression, having been involved in this for four years now, that. The default would be, you got the, you got, you got a city park n- next door to you, and it's like, well. Make use of it, as, as far as putting in a high-density development. And here we have, um, a city park, uh, a block, a half a block away. And then we have the biggest city park, three blocks away, over, over the expressway to Morgan. So I guess my question is, was there any discussion about the fact as to whether or not you need, really need to have this. This green space playground in a high-density, uh, in a, in a high-density development when there are parks, uh, accessible. For, uh, very, very accessible, and whether or not there was any discussion on that regard?
Um, so I'd like the applicant to speak to their decision-making process and including the open space. Um, from the city's perspective, there is a common open space requirement, um, as stipulated in the multifamily development and design standards. Which they are far in exceedance of meeting, um, so they, under our standards, they did not have to provide such a large common open space. Um, but the developer did elect to do so, um, but I will let them answer for their reasons for doing so.
Okay. Okay, anybody else have any questions? For planning? Okay, so, um, I'll, I'll open it up for, um, public. And the applicant has five minutes, no, excuse me, the applicant, are you? Are you the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. No, okay, we, we, we're gonna have the. Okay, thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, uh, Jim Sullivan, a resident of Campbell. Um, so I know a lot of people here are talking about this project and just listening to your questions, uh, you brought up many. I'm gonna address just a couple of them, but I just wanted to kind of go through some of the items. Kind of getting, letting you guys or sharing with you in the audience kind of what our thoughts were. So first of all, I want to point out, when the city did its housing element, this was the lowest density category, I believe, the eighteen to twenty-five. And as Tracy had pointed out, we have to do seventy-five percent of the max, so eight, I mean, forty units is basically the minimum that we can do on the site. So we're on the lowest end that we can be in. Um, as pointed out, parking over the minimum required, I think we're doing six additional parking spaces. Not meeting the city's requirement, they would typically require two and a half parking spaces per unit, but the state looks at your bedroom count. And, you know, basically it's between one and two point five. Every unit will have a two-car garage, I think twelve of them are tandem, twenty-eight of them are side by side. There's basically fourteen guest-only parking spaces that will be on the site as well. Um, as mentioned by Tracy, the three low and the three moderate income units, I think is a benefit to, uh, to the city. Uh, the size of that park, um, that we were talking about is, uh, just about a quarter of an acre, so a little, around ten thousand square feet. Um, and the other thing on top of that, not looking for any park fee credit, we're paying, I think that Tracy had said, a little bit over seven hundred and fifty. Two, seven hundred and fifteen, eight hundred thousand dollars to the city. Uh, one of the things that our team is very proud of is the city has a requirement of ten percent of all residential developments. Have open space, this project actually has thirty-five percent, uh, for open space. Uh, there's, there are some protected trees on site, uh, they're being replaced with eighty-seven replacement trees. Uh, forty-four fifteen-gallon trees, thirty-four twenty-four-inch box trees, and nine thirty-six-inch box trees. Uh, the units are basically, there's two-bedroom units, I think we have twelve of those, they're about fourteen hundred square feet. And then the other units, Plan Two and Plan Three, range from, I think, eighteen hundred to twenty-one hundred square feet, those are four-bedroom units. So we feel that we're appealing to a wide array of, uh, of potential buyers. Uh, the garages are all between five hundred and six hundred feet. Um, the porch deck and courtyard areas of each unit are between a minimum of two hundred feet and a maximum of five hundred feet. So each unit has their own kind of, what I'll say, private open space as well. Uh, studies and reports that were done for this project, and, and this isn't all of them, but the key ones were soils, noise, traffic. Uh, greenhouse gas emissions, air quality, biology, and cultural resources. One of the things that I can see that a lot of you and people in the audience have problems with on the waivers. I want to point out, and I brought this up on the Llewellyn project, there's about, uh, you know, close to two hundred MFDDS. Items that we're looking at, right? Some of those items, we believe that staff is going to be coming back and changing. One of the items, for, for instance, that we're looking at a waiver for is the front of the, or the side of the units. Which we want to articulate better and have a front entry in off of Virginia, because we think that that looks better. Isn't allowed under the current MFDDS, so we're asking for a waiver on that, because we think that it, it's actually something that's better. Um, really quickly, uh, I wanted to say, uh, I think that Matthew did a good, good job talking about the traffic study. I do want to point out, I've, I've done this for thirty years, so typically, single-family detached homes average ten trips. Per household per day, if it's an attached product, it's typically seven household trips, that means going out and coming back in. Trips per day, I thought that what was looked at originally, when, because we went from a LOS to a vehicle miles travel. And so they're not really looking at that anymore, but it was the peak hour trips that they were saying has to be below that threshold. And I do want to remind the, the planning commission, I brought this up before on Llewellyn. That the EIR that was for your entire housing element, found that traffic was going to be a significant impact that could not be mitigated. They issued what's called overriding consideration on that, so. Theoretically, I could have said, we don't even have to look at, you know, higher hexagon to do a traffic, you know, uh, study. We wanted to do that, and they came up with some good ideas for us as far as painting, you know, kind of red curves and relocating one of the parking spaces. Uh, one of the questions from a commissioner was when Valley Oak Partners had purchased the property, it was in October of twenty twenty-one, so about two and a half years ago. We've been, we had to be very patient, obviously, with the city going through the general plan, the zoning, the EIR and the housing element. Along with the MFDDS, uh, and Tracy answered, uh, perfectly, the undergrounding. We are going to move one of the guy wires, um, but it's just the lines that are up there right now, everything into our subdivision will be underground. Uh, with that, I know that there's, um, uh, public comment, and I'll, I'll be happy to answer your questions now or after the public comment, period.
We're gonna have. You stay there. Anybody want to have a question?
Uh, you mentioned on sort of MFDDS compliance, sort of had edge case example of like, all right. This, this could feel better, that's why we wanted the waiver. Are there any like core substantial ones where you feel like you've really deviated, because from the?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, that's what I think some of the commissioners were kind of coming down to, right? And it's like, hey, so theoretically, could you ask for a hundred and eighty-seven waiver, you know, like waive every single thing? We really tried to meet the spirit of MFDDS. I would say that probably the biggest issue, right, that at least some of the neighbors that are behind this project, um, on the other side of the channel. Um, and I met with some of them after having received their letters of concern. Um, was the privacy issue and the height or the shading issue. We looked at that, so we're at the closest about eighty feet away from one of our buildings to, you know, one of the, the rear of their house. And they're, I think, all single-story houses on that side. Uh, one of the things that I had thrown out at the time was, hey, would you be interested if I could provide some screening landscaping? Like in your backyard, that would make you feel more comfortable, but their backyards are pretty tight, and I didn't think that they were. You know, that they were interested in that, so we went back to our team to see, okay. What landscaping can we put along the six-foot fence that we're planting, you know, next to the, to the channel? And our site is so tight that we can't put trees there. I mean, I could build maybe a lattice fence, if the city would allow me to do that, but even that's going to be probably eight feet tall. I think that their concern was more for like the second and third stories, as people go into their units, are they going to be able to see down into their garage? And several of them also have, uh, solar panels, we did look at kind of like a shade slope going down. And with the distance that we're away, uh, we don't feel that that's going to be an issue. I mean, I'll let them speak for themselves, but in our opinion, you know, it would be the last, you know, hour or so of, you know, sunset.
Got it. Um. The solar panel on the roof, how does that sort of benefit get divided up amongst the homes?
Oh, for ours?
Correct.
Yeah, so we're, so there's a California law that every new housing development, whether it's apartments, whether it's townhomes, whether it's single-family detached. Has to put solar on every unit, so every single one of these forty units will have solar, as will every house in California.
So there's, like, there's forty discreet solar units?
Yes.
That correspond?
Yeah, yeah, because they're all metered, so unlike an apartment, for instance, or, um, even though this will have an HOA. The solar panels will go for each individual unit.
Got it, and, uh, you mentioned a couple traffic calming things, red curbs.
Yeah, uh, yeah, so, so yeah, Hexagon basically didn't look at, okay, slowing down traffic along Virginia, which in reading some of the letters, I think some of the neighbors are concerned about that. As they were on Llewellyn as well, and so are, the Hexagon basically said, okay, hey, we want you to pull one of your guest parking sp- spots a little bit farther away from Virginia. And we think at the entrances, you should, you should have red painted curbs. So that people don't park right up next to that private driveway, which would obscure traffic. But what Matthew was talking about and what the, what the chair had brought up was at Llewellyn, you can go onto the city's website. And basically, the city comes out and says, okay, what can we do, whether it's speed bumps at certain, you know, particular spots? I know there's a stop sign, you know, as you're kind of going down towards Virginia Park. And then I think it's a, pretty much a straight shot until you get to the pedestrian, uh, whatever the, the other street to the north is.
Got it. Um, and then same question from the Llewellyn property, the open space you've added, is that, you know, technically accessible by general public?
Yeah, you know, so in, in this, actually, Llewellyn wasn't, you know, as, as far as they're not, it's going to be owned and maintained by the HOA. But as far as, you know, if somebody asked me, like the person at Llewellyn asked me, so if I walk onto it, am I going to get arrested? And I said, I, I really don't think so, I mean, because we're making the sidewalks public, you know, kind of through the development. So this is going to be a privately owned and maintained park for the homeowners. What they do in the future is kind of, you know, up to them. And actually, to your question earlier, I do think we did have a park. You know, so before Tracy's involvement, you know, we had the park on the backside and we actually fronted the townhomes as you would typically see them, you know, kind of going down like a, a major road, you know, where the townhomes and there's like little stoops that are kind of coming down. And in working, again, before Tracy's involvement with staff on other iterations, we felt that it looked better not having the mast right up against Virginia. So you'll notice that the units are kind of siding onto Virginia. There will still be front door entrances into those units, but the majority of the street, you know, will be kind of a landscape setting or a park-like setting. And I think that we're plant, the plan is to actually have a fence kind of behind that public sidewalk mainly for child safety.
Yeah, I actually had some questions about that, so thank you. I mean, I do agree that it does look nice from the street to have all that open space, but it is a balance between that and the, and the concerns of the residents that are behind it and the three-story, as you discussed and as we heard from the letters that came in. So, you know, something to think about for future, we see a lot, so, you know, that's my comment. As far as the fencing in the front for safety, I did see that in the plan. Kind of what I didn't see in the plan was what, what typically we see with new parks that are developed for kids, which is that there's fencing all the way around the area of the park and the, and the green open space so that, you know, with little gates, so the kids can't like run off as they tend to as a parent, you know?
Yeah.
Them and then you don't see them.
No, I had three little kids, trust me.
So having, you know, everything fenced in, I think, would be a big value add to the comfort and safety of the kids and the parents that are living there. Or anybody else in the neighborhood that may be coming by.
That is a great idea and an easy fix. I was not aware of it, shame on my landscape architect.
Yeah.
I will talk to them.
You know, just figure out how to like make it look
Yeah. Yeah. And before I take other questions, could I just go back to Commissioner Fields' thing? Because when you had asked me, like, one of the things that we didn't do, I want to talk about the adjacency standards. And Tracy mentioned that we had a waiver for that. So under the MFDDS, if you have a shared property line with a residential neighbor and you're within 30 feet of that shared property line, you're required to go down per the MFDDS to 25, 25 feet or two and a half stories. Okay, we're at three stories and to the eve line, we're at 30 feet. Tracy's number of 36 feet was, that's to the peak. But I will say that we only have one shared property line with a residential property. So to the north of us is the church and to the south of us is actually a vacant lot. And then there's another house next to that. So even though the neighbors that are behind us, right, on the other side of the channel, we, you know, that channel is, I don't know, 60 feet wide or something like that, right? So we don't share a shared property line with them. So really, along one edge, the southern edge, you know, and we just didn't, it would kind of bastardize the plan, if you will, you know, kind of doing that. But I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, thank, thank you for allowing me to go back.
We have more questions? Mr. Craig?
Yep, just three quick questions. Our, do you know, Mr. Sullivan, when, when your client bought the property in October 2021, did they, did the water company have to first make it available to nonprofit housing developers?
So I did, I don't know this for sure, but I remember when, when the city council was approving the general plan and the housing element, you know, they did all of that April of 2023. The mayor at that time, Mayor Gibbons, had mentioned that this site came to the city, right, to potentially purchase. And at the time, and it might have been years before that. And I remember, you know, I think that she snapped her fingers and she said, you know, we should have bought that, right? So I know that it was offered and declined by the city. I don't know about other nonprofits.
Okay. And the other, another question I have, and this might be more for Tracy, but I, and it just came to me as we were talking, but we have so many great public trails along our creeks. Is there any thought of a, of a right-of-way for a trail that might possibly go in there or is that never come up?
If I can answer that question, Mr. Chair, really quickly. So actually, our site, our total site is closer to 2.2 acres, which would have even been more density. But there's 10 feet, so, and some of you commissioners went out there and kind of looked at the site, where the chain-linked fence is against the back, the property owner actually owns 10 feet of land. But there's an easement that was granted to Santa Clara Valley Water District decades ago, right? And it's, there's locked gates, like as you go closer over to San Tomas where it goes. It's really not safe for a pedestrian path, in my opinion, because it kind of slopes down. And then the neighbors behind me, they also have, there's about a 10-foot setback from the top of the bank or the top of the channel to their rear yard fence. So I don't know if they own out there and they gave up an easement as well, but we have a 10-foot easement, which we're not using as part of this development. And frankly, we would prefer just deed over to Santa Clara Valley Water District.
Tracy, you don't know if the city or county has any, any grand plans in the long, long range for a trail there?
I haven't heard of anything proposed for a trail along that area.
Okay, all right. And just one final question, I know this came up at the Llewellyn project, that, but so there's 14 guest-only parking spaces. Again, there's really no way to guarantee that the residents don't park in the guest spaces, is there?
Yeah, I mean, it really kind of comes down to the, to the HOA management team. And if it's a problem for them and they enforce it, you know, one of the, the neighboring groups by Llewellyn said, we had that problem in spades and then after towing two or three cars, the problem went away. And they actually have kind of a permit system that they can give to their guests. So, but as long as the developer is on the site and they'll be managing the HOA essentially for the first year of development or after the, the houses are done, that's typical, it will be enforced.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Solomon. So I want to ask you the same question I asked Matt, the traffic engineer. So you mentioned some of these units are four-bedroom?
Yes.
Three-bedroom, two-bedroom?
Yes, must be them.
No, three-bedroom?
Just
Two-bedroom and
You're correct, yeah, two-bedroom, 12 two-bedroom units. And they're more like two spacious units,
Okay.
which we think, you know, attracts, you know, a particular set of people. And then the other 28 units are four-bedroom units. Yes.
So even if, even if you take one person per bedroom, that's four. So if you count that every one of these units is occupied, at least one person per bedroom, you get quite a few number of people living there. And so I'm, I have a little bit of a difficulty coming to terms with the, with the peak travel that the study came up with. You know, by my count, there could be more than 100 people living there.
Yeah, that, that's looked at environmentally and I forgot what the number is, but I think that that's a, it's, it's a pretty close number. It's probably two-point, you know, somewhere between 2.3 to 2.7 people per household that the environmentalists will look at to determine, you know, everything, noise, traffic, all of that.
Sure. So, you know, so let's say 2.3 times 40, which is the number of units.
Yeah.
That's almost 100.
Yeah.
And so 19 peak travel, and I do understand that everybody leaves at the same time, you know? But peak travel isn't one hour either, you know, it's like maybe over range.
I think it's two hours. So yeah, AM peak is six to eight, I believe, Matthew. And PM peak is four to six. Seven to nine and in the morning. And then like four to six.
Four to six.
Yeah.
So is there, are you providing like, you know, any, any extra, I guess, features in the homes that so that, so that they could use remote
Oh, yeah.
working and, you know, so they don't have to get in their cars if they don't have to.
Yeah, that, that's a great question. And really, I'm not going to say statewide, but at least Bay Area-wide, what most of the developers have seen is less kids, we're seeing that in our school numbers, right? School population is kind of dropping just because it's less people per family. But the number of people that are, you know, utilizing home offices, so probably you will have, and I live, you know, off of Chamberlain Court, right? So four- and five-bedroom houses and there's, you know, like a husband and a wife and, you know, she has her home office, he has his home office, and they still might go into work, you know, one or two days a week. But I think that these units, I think that your number of probably right around 100 people, you know, in this development will probably be true. But, you know, some of the four-bedroom units will be, you know, either a husband and a wife kind of getting into their older years and the kids are out, right? And they just have an office or a rec room or, you know, workout place. And then, but you know, hopefully there will be some families too, because they're our lifeblood.
And it does make sense, if you can avoid the peak hour travel, you, you would, you know, you would arrange your schedule to miss it.
Certainly, yeah.
Thank you.
Can I ask why you waived the bird-safe windows? Can I ask why you waived the bird-safe windows?
Yes, yes. And actually, we agreed with Mr. Eastwood, the planning director. First of all, our biological study didn't find that it was a particularly pressing issue. It's something that, that the city may look at when they revise the MFDDS. But the planning director, when we asked for the waiver, he basically asked me, the units that are facing the channel, where birds might be. Now, there's no, by the way, there's no riparian habitat at all. It's a concrete channel. But we had agreed with the city that we, that every second and third story window, or excuse me, first and second story window facing the creek would have bird-safe treatments on it. We just didn't think that the other ones were necessary.
Thank you for sharing the reasoning there. And two other questions. Will the playground be accessible to the general public? I noticed that's sort of right on the road.
Yeah, no, at this time, we, we're not making it available to the general public.
Okay, and if approved here, when do you expect to start construction? And when do you expect to finish?
Yeah, so if, if approved, after approval, you have to go through a final map and improvement plans. That's typically administrative. That can take between four to six months. I believe that we would start right away on that. So basically, six months from now would take us to, you know, November roughly. And there's not really any demo to be done, but grading would start first. And actually, grading could actually technically happen before the final map. And then the first buildings, it's probably a, I would say a 12 to 16-month build-out process from start to finish.
Okay, so probably around November 2025 to spring 2026?
No, November 2024, if we start.
Probably you'd be finished in between November 2025
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Spring 2026.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Cory? Cory, do you have any questions?
Yes, I think I found the answer, but the arborist report is stating that all the trees along Virginia Avenue are to be retained. And it looks like the civil engineering plan has them slated for removal. So just wanted to double-check what's happening with those trees since that was a concern.
You're going to handle it, Roger? I know one of them is dead, the one that's farthest to the north, but I'll let, I'll let Roger come in.
Yes, hi, I register with Public Works. So the city arborist and I walked that stretch and a number of those trees per the city arborist are in poor shape. They're large, larger trees that are growing under the existing power lines. And they're continuously being, for lack of a better word, hacked, you know, as part of keeping them clear of the overhead power lines, utility lines. And so they're just really not the right tree. And they're old and several of them are diseased. And it's just, given the opportunity here with the site, you know, complete reconstruction of the site and we're going to be reconstructing the curb, gutter and sidewalk as well. It's the right time to put the right tree under those power lines. Trees that grow smaller, grow to a height that won't necessarily get up into the power lines, constantly forcing them to be trimmed and hacked at.
So you're talking about all those olive trees?
Yeah.
Right, there's like a whole line of olive trees on the front?
There's, I thought there was also, I forget the other species.
I don't know what the other one
I really noticed the olive trees.
Right?
Some ginkgos, I think someone mentioned, but anyway, like I said, I walked in with the arborist and he was
So all those big trees on Virginia would go?
All, all the ones between the curb and the sidewalk would, would come out and be replaced.
Cory, you have any other questions?
That was it, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
May I cover everybody? Okay, so I, I, yeah, thanks, Roger. Actually, most of my questions have been answered, including some that I didn't ask. So I was, I was curious about the, the, the distance to the Sobrato Homes and you said it's about 80 feet. And, and
It's 80 feet at the closest, I think.
I mean, the closest buildings that you're building
Yes.
To, to the back of somebody's home?
Yes, is 80, is between 80 feet and 120 feet.
Okay, all right. So I, I would actually recommend, even, even though it's going to not necessarily, it totally covered the sightline, is, is if, if, if the city would approve, and I don't know if we can put this in, but the, the idea of going to a bigger fence actually might be beneficial not only to the people on Sobrato, but also to your, your, your people who are going to buy the
Yeah.
the, into those places that are looking back there that might be more attractive if you had a couple more feet of lattice or whatever it is that we can do. So I, I think that, just from a subjective point of view, I think that whatever you could do back there would be desirable. It, it just, so my identification, it seemed to me on the, on the design, which I thought in general is a nice-looking design. I mean, at first glance, it looks, you know, actually staggering the buildings and everything. It's like, I like them all in a row and that kind of thing. But, but it looks like the, the, the back buildings, the front entrance is on the back.
It is facing the channel, you're right. And which is kind of interesting because the homeowners won't access that way. Of course, they'll go into their garage, right, parking into their garage, which they have to do, and then going up through the, you know, through the entrance there. But guests
Yes.
coming will be walking around, yeah, where that fence is and walking up
They have that on the, the Los Gatos Creek Trail.
Yeah, I noticed that, I ride that all the time.
Of course, they get the overlooked Los Gatos Creek Trail.
Which is beautiful.
Which is beautiful. So it's, it's a little different. So I, I'm just, you know, wondering about, you know, I assume there's windows facing, I don't know whether there are bedrooms or there, there are living rooms that are facing east there. The, the, the view isn't great. You know, the, you know, the, the creek is not, you know, it's not really a
It's not a riparian corridor.
It's a, yeah, it's not a riparian corridor. It's a, it's, it's a, it's a culvert, it's a, it's a concrete culvert. So you answered the question about the park. We talked about the traffic calming. And, yeah, actually, I don't have any more questions because they've been mostly answered. So we appreciate you hanging in there and answering our questions.
And if I can come back up, just for my three minutes after the residents have a chance to talk. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so, hold on a second, hold on a second. So, so do we have, can I just get a, a hand thing about who will want to speak on this? Okay, okay, so, you know, so Okay, okay, so, um, I, you know, since since this is, I think, important to you folks and there's not like twenty or thirty, I I'm gonna let them have three minutes, that's okay. And, um, i- is this lady gonna be our first?
Your name is Sandy Lee?
Natalia, I did it, you are the first first.
If you go from the back. Tyler, what the person do?
Okay. Come on. If you could state your name and your.
I understand.
Okay.
Um, hello, planning commission members, neighbors, good to have you here and members of public. My name is Natalia Fong and I have lived on Virginia Avenue across from the proposed project for exactly thirty years. So I'm going to speak about a couple of aspects that bother me. But first I would like Tracy to bring on the screen page sixty seven of TPDF file that shows the site and shows Virginia Avenue. So, uh, I'm going to talk about Tracy, but nothing is going to serve us better than that page. Now I'm going to talk about the aspect that you haven't covered yet. I mean, though, I appreciate all questions while Tracy that you ask. Before I talk about Tracy, um, I'd like to say that I'm opposed to multiple elements of the project as proposed today. First, I'd like to avoid a complaint about the planning commission insufficient notification. Even though Tracy has shown that people receive two cards, since last September, I live at three to three Virginia Avenue, right between two proposed driveways, I received none. If at eight AM in the morning, I didn't phone in to my neighbor, Steve, who told me about the meeting today, I wouldn't have known about it. And it took me a lot of effort to get to the documents associated with the proposal and be like you today. So, um. Um, not only myself, but most people in the neighborhood who will be negatively impacted did not receive notification about the planning committee, uh, planning commission meeting tonight about this project. And I should like to call the decision and demand the details multiple times, including complaints to my council member, to the mayor's office, to the city manager, and multiple calls to the planning officers today. And this is while, by the way, I work a full time job and I was trying to do my work at the same time. Why haven't Tracy detailed us of this proposed large project and asked me before someone that is small? For me, it is not small. Four additional condominiums, as the vice chair pointed out, over a hundred people, eighty cars. This isn't small. I hope that, uh, this was an honest mistake and it was not intentional. So my household and my neighbors, their next door households, still, uh, these are households with high medical risks. And some of us are too old to move. So it looks like the project as proposed and documented today isn't going to offer any positive conditions to our neighborhood, but instead it worries. Uh, Tracy, are you ready for slide sixty seven, please? Could you please bring slide sixty seven, uh, on the screen? Tracy, uh, page sixty seven?
Is that, is that the page of the agenda?
This is the page of the proposal for the project that shows the image of the Virginia Avenue adjacent to the project. Virginia Avenue, narrow street with steep driveways. We cannot get into the driveway straight up. We have to get into the driveway from the side. The very small place between two driveways is going to make a hell of a time getting into our driveways. If you're unable to get this page sixty seven on on the screen, which, um, I brought the diagram and I can now give it to the chair.
Can I ask you while we're while we're bringing it up, what street do you live on?
Excuse me?
What street do you live on?
Virginia, three to three Virginia Avenue. As soon as you see that slide sixty seven, you go to my phone.
Are you directly across the street from?
Uh, we are directly across the street.
Ma'am, ma'am, we're not gonna be able to hear you. Um. So, uh.
So look at the middle.
Can we show where Virginia is?
Okay, allow me to give you, uh, this page here because this isn't the page. This is the page that I want to show. Because this page in fact shows new dangerous traffic and parking pattern on Virginia Avenue. You have street houses, steep driveways, two new driveways where the people potentially exiting right and left. There is going to be very difficult for me to get into my driveway and exit from my driveway. This additional hundred people or more. By the way, I disagree with the applicant when she talks about a very small number of people. In fact, I'm familiar with real estate and own other properties. And two bedroom, two bathroom is the new family choice of apartment or real estate. These are the families who plan to have at least one or sometimes two children. Uh, I do have to walk to the slide to show you my phone.
Slide, oh, okay, I see. So it's Virginia?
Here's my phone.
Okay.
She has an attractive park. So if someone is exiting from driveway to the back, they're impacting our parking pattern.
Okay.
So one would need to reach your, uh, reach it. But the proposal, I'm thinking, my story.
Since we're recording the meetings, that you need to speak from the microphone.
So one will tell pretty speak partly better.
We we seem to have.
I'm listening back, this is one. Uh, okay, another problem that I have is with many cars entering and exiting driveways. And here there are street parking demand. I expect that getting out of my driveway safely or parking on the street will become a nightmare. Again, my home is three to three Virginia Avenue.
Okay, you need to, you need to wrap it up.
Uh, I'm gonna finish reading. Well, at the fact that Virginia Avenue is shared with bicycles and frequently used by motorcycles. And you get more potential safety issues because of the traffic and park park increase. Use of density bonus law waivers and a concession from zoning code will negatively impact lives of people in our neighborhood to the worst and will change its character forever. And it's seen by the neighbors who just raised their hands as the sellout of our city representatives to real estate developers. About the planning commission staff recommendation told that this item be deemed categorically exempt from CE two A. This is categorically unacceptable and we need to see independent assessment of what this development project will do to noise, traffic, parking, pollution levels and breaking back. And the last, I don't see in the developer proposal any improvements and commitments that will come to the neighborhood in exchange for this project. And I would like to request that they propose compensations for the future neighbors whose life will change dramatically if this project proceeds.
Okay, Natalia. Natalia, your time is up. Your time is up.
I told her I did use for hours.
Your time is, your time is up.
I kept last year's.
You you wrote.
The summit of.
Natalia, you wrote a letter that covered all this, right?
A request that this proposal is not approved today.
Okay, thank you.
But in hands to address our concerns.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for.
I'd like to, I'd like this to be added to the record of today's meeting.
Was this in the email that you sent?
Uh, I sent this via email to my council member. And I sent different email to Tracy.
Okay. Thank you.
But Virginia Avenue, steep driveway.
Ma'am, we we have to, we have to move on. Thank you.
Yeah, you don't play from that street, you have to move on.
Chair Caesar, the next person is Christine Sun.
Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna put you light on and if when it goes orange and then red, you'll be done, okay?
Got it, can you guys, can everyone hear me? My name is Christine Sun, I live at seven four zero West Ring Con for the last seventeen years. If the picture is up, I am right on the corner. So it would be at the three way stop, the proposed development where the driveway is would be a four way stop. So I am right at that corner. So my concern is mostly around parking. As the commissioner, um, pointed out earlier, if you assume one adult per bedroom, right? Then you have twenty eight units with four bedrooms. And this again is worst case scenario, but my concern is overflow parking to the street, which already has three commercial buildings adjacent, two churches, one of which is also operates as a daycare or preschool. And you have a nursing home. So when there are events, the whole street of Virginia is already, uh, full of of cars. So if you use the worst case scenario of one per bedroom, that comes out to, I just did the math over there at the in my chair, that's a hundred and thirty six adults. If you assume everyone has a car, that's a hundred and thirty six cars. Yes, there is a two car garage, but there are no driveways. So how many people can actually fit two cars in a two car garage? I'm gonna assume nobody. So if you assume there's one car per two car garage, that comes out to a hundred extra cars that could potentially overflow. Again, that's worst case scenario, but you get my pictures, even if you had half of that, you had fifty cars, then that is gonna cover all of Virginia, that's gonna overflow onto Ring Con, that's gonna overflow onto Bucknell. And it already goes all the way to Bud when the churches have events, right? So you're thinking Sunday Mass, whatever, we we, as the neighbors that live there, already see the street completely full on events. So rather than seeing more green space, which you noted there are two parks right there, I'd rather see extra parking or some kind of design to include driveways. So at least the residents in their own home could overflow on their own property and not into the public streets. And so in the parking and the street, I think what Natalia was trying to say is everyone who lives in Campbell know that we have these steep driveways that are historical and cannot be changed. Um, but to actually, if you have a sedan to park into your, to get into your driveway, you have to go at an angle. If you go straight in, you are gonna scrape. So everyone comes in onto the side. So I think what Natalia is trying to explain is if your overflow street parking is budding up right to your driveway, you do not have the angle to actually get in. See what I'm saying? If you can't go straight and you have to go to the side, but you have cars there, you can't get in and out of your own driveway. I don't know if I'm visualizing that or whoever lives in Campbell knows those driveways, but I think that's what Natalia is talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Wagner?
Hi, uh, my name is Tom Wagner, I live on Sobrato Drive across the culvert from this, uh, project. Um, and, uh, I'm gonna focus on privacy because we have issues, all the issues that everybody else has, but I'm gonna focus on privacy, that's our biggest concern. Um, I haven't heard any accommodation for privacy at all, all I've heard is excuses. Um, and they request that we give up some of our land to plant trees to block their view into our backyard. It is not ten feet between the edge of the creek and our and our fence. It is less than ten feet. We had our fence replaced recently and I looked, it is not ten feet. And even if it's eighty feet to my back, the back of my house, meaning it's eighty feet to look into my bedroom, it's far less than that to look into my backyard. And we like to sit in our backyard. One of the reasons we bought the house that we bought. We bought thousand twenty fifteen, first time homeowners, super excited to move in. We have really enjoyed living in Campbell. But as far as you can tell, no accommodations made for privacy. And I don't know that we can stand to stay living there when we're gonna have people in a third story, a three story building, looking directly into our backyard all of the time. Um, I I wanna say that I am a huge proponent of high density housing. California has a housing problem, we have to do something. But this project could be built with forty units in a way that affords privacy for us. And they are unwilling to consider it at all. As a matter of fact, Jim was kind enough to talk to us, but he told us that they originally had the green space in the back and the city said to move it to the front, which seems to be at best an exaggeration. So, uh, the frustration is palpable. My watch told me my blood pressure was was rising as I sat in the seat. Um, it's rising now and, uh, it is, it's just ridiculous. Uh, I I don't want to leave Campbell, but I don't know that I can, that we can stay when we have that sixty feet away from us. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Sandy Hames?
Hi, my name is Sandy Hames, I live at three twenty five Sobrato Drive. My sister bought the house in nineteen fifty nine when it was brand new. Um. Our main concern is privacy because according to the drawing that we received in the mail, the windows and the balconies are all facing the, um, the creek area. And the creek area is right on, we're right on the other side of that creek. It's about, our backyard is about fifteen to twenty feet from the house to our fence. And then, then the creek is after that. So it's really, it's a tiny backyard. There is no place to put extra trees. You can put the extra trees on the site where the, um, proposed for forty units would be. You can put the extra trees on that backside along to provide us with more privacy. Um. We do have, um. That there, there are six homes that are directly, um, impacted by this project on Sobrato. And five of them have the tiny backyards. Um, we have a big front yard, but a tiny backyard. So we can use our backyard, it's great, we've got tables, we've got pergola, you know, we do use our backyard. And with somebody out there on the, on their balconies or, you know, it, we would lose our privacy. Um, I know there was, we were told by Jim Sullivan that there was another proposal that moved the 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 buildings closer to Virginia and had a space so the trees could be built. Uh, be built, the trees could be planted and it would provide us more privacy, but that was not being considered. Um, I, we are requesting that to be considered for this plan. Um. The traffic study needs to also study Bud Avenue traffic. Um, and the traffic pattern with well, many times, people just kind of do that California stop at Bud and Sobrato and go right through. So when you, when you're coming on Sobrato, we all know, you stop and wait because somebody's gonna run the stop sign. Um, and that, that is, I've seen it at Santa Moss Expressway too, but I see it more on Bud. Um, hey, that is my, our request is that for the, for for privacy reasons and noise is to put put the trees on the property, uh, the four hundred unit, the forty unit.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
John Matthew?
Hi, my name is John Matthew, I live on eight two zero West Lincoln Avenue, Campbell. The, what I see in our neighborhood, the stop sign which actually on the corner of Virginia and Lincoln, people sometimes just go by. No stop at all, just keep going straight. Or if they stop from, uh, Virginia, they're ramping up the speed all the way to San Tomas Aquino Road, going even though there are stop signs. going even though there are stop signs. So I believe that some of you have seen the property we are talking about. And there is left, the right of the Rincon. The cars are coming with the high speed. There is no stop right away. People are going to the park with the little kids. The parents are walking them to the park there. Also, some people are going on to the left to cross the bridge to John D. Morgan Park. So both sides are being used by traffic, you know, people. So I just wanted to make sure you guys protect all of those. Because there was a fatality on the corner of Rincon and Virginia. One motorcyclist hit the, hit the electric post. And the body went to somebody else's property. So just to make sure that any things that you approve, protect the people. Because that, number one, should be our concern. I'm not against any housing, but I see what's going on. And the traffic study was done. Is this the school time, when there was school, or when the school was out? Because I see from eight-thirty to nine o'clock, I had to wait at least five, six cars to make a right turn from my garage. Because they are constantly running. Because to the right, you have Canyon Heights, you have St. Lucy, you have other public schools behind going this way. And this way, very less traffic actually to the left, only on weekends. Because the churches are in position, you know, they are doing services usually on weekend. That time, that side is filled. But there is also a nursing home. So take consideration of all these. Because people have to go to Virginia to get into Campbell to make a right turn into San Tomas Expressway. And the same way, otherwise, to Bud and go that way. So just be, take a look at this and be considerate. And any, any plans you have, please make it to be safe. Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Chris Mickelson.
Uh, my name is Chris Mickelson. I live at eight-three-eight West Rincon Avenue. Chris. Uh, and I just wanted to reiterate what Christine said. I think the parking is grossly underestimated. Yes, it has two-car garage, but nobody in California parks their car in a garage. Everybody puts crap in their garage. I do. So I find it hard to believe that that's what's going to, that isn't what's going to happen with this. Maybe not all of them, but I think a vast majority of them are just going to fill their garages with the stuff that we've accumulated over our lifetimes. And then they're gonna do the overflow parking onto the street, which is, again, as John said, there's a lot of people that go down that street. A lot of people blow through the stop sign. A lot of people go down Rincon, go down Bucknell. So I think that really needs to be reconsidered. And we looked at, especially if, like you said, it wasn't done during maybe schooltime or I guess when the churches are going. So that was it. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Kathy Mastini.
I figured I'd hand, hand my paper in. I live next door, so my name is
Say your name.
Yeah, Kathy Mastini. I live next door to, excuse me, Christine's son, actually. So I'm one house from the corner of what is a three-way stop right now will become the four-way stop. I do leave in the morning during the high-impact time. And it's, I have a difficult time without all of that that's gonna be added. I, I'm glad it's being added. It's not a concern about it being there. It's how am I gonna get out of my driveway in the morning? Yes, my, my going in is hard. Coming out for me is hard because I'll hit my, sorry, I'll hit my car on the, my driveway if I don't come out on an angle. I have in my spot, I have to look at one, two, three, four different places to be able to get out of my driveway without counting adding new people. Because there are people coming down my street. There's people coming from Christopher. And I'm not sure Christopher's been really acknowledged as to how it's going to impact their road. And I think that needs to be taken a look at, too, as well as somebody had said over on Bud. I think that's gonna make an impact, too. So I have to look a lot of different ways just to get out of my driveway. And that doesn't include these two-hundred-and-eighty total trips during the day as compared to doing these just little small hours or half-hours that were looked at. Just something to request the consideration. And then also the consideration of a parking permit for our neighbors so that we can actually park in front of our own homes or have our family and friends park in front of our own homes. I think that's it. Otherwise, we're glad to have housing that's gonna help the people that need to have houses. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Chair, there is one person online.
Hi, good evening. Charlie Gibson. I'm over at twenty-one-twenty-five Abbey Lane. And I learned of this project at exactly six-thirty-eight this morning, when I saw it on a neighborhood post. I'm, I've been running all day trying to figure out what's going on here. But just wanted to speak from experience. I was a resident at the Madison Townhomes over on Stan Cavill Lane. As a matter of fact, I was the first president of the HOA. And I think it would behoove the commission here this evening and the developer to listen closely to what the residents are saying here. Because everything they are saying is absolutely accurate and very true. Parking will be a significant issue for the many of the reasons you've heard. And everybody will take their cars that can't go into the garages, and they'll put them out on the streets. This, this has happened at Madison, and it was a big problem. And especially in regard to maintaining the area. It went into a, a very poor condition almost immediately because in the street cleaners, the city could not get in to do the cleaning. We used to have to arrange special sessions for the city to come out and, and move all the cars out of the way through no parking in advanced planning and come in and do work. And then it would just back, backfill and have the same problem all over again. So I think that's an issue that really has to be addressed. I don't know how you're gonna do that, but it's, it certainly needs to be discussed a little more fully. As far as the allowance for giving up parking at this forty site, forty-townhome site, I think that's an error. I think you should try to put more parking into the site to accommodate people's needs that they're gonna have there. It's called visitor parking. It will become permanent parking by the residents of this, the townhomes. The other issue I have here is during, not so much the long term, because I think it's a nice-looking project. I think it will ultimately work. But I think the biggest issue you're going to experience here is during the construction phase. They are very small, they're neighborhood streets around here. And I'm just fearful that these streets will be inundated with large equipment, cement mixers, everything that goes along with the construction site. And that I, I would be really interested in knowing how that's going to be addressed by the developer. What routes are they going to use? Are they gonna take precautions? Are they gonna prepare in advance? Are they gonna trim trees so they don't get damaged? There's a lot of things that need to be discussed, still. The green space in front is fine. It will be a buffer. The, the, the park, quote, park area that was built at Madison, it was a small, open space with a, with one climbing structure that was put into it. That was it. And no one was happy with it. It was so minimum, it, it didn't meet anybody's requirements or needs over there. The last thing I will say, and, and this was the slide that came up earlier. I noticed now that the driveway on the south side of the site, where it fronts Virginia Avenue, is actually going out into a middle of an intersection. And I've never seen that before.
Okay, Charlie, you have to wrap it up.
Okay, fine. It's a three-way stop, and, and I see a driveway now going out into the middle of an intersection, which I think the traffic engineer should revisit. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Charles. Is there someone else? State your name.
Uh, my name is Raja Palila. I live on Hacienda Avenue, Campbell. I, you know, I want to bring it to the attention. I know there was a lot of concerns raised here. As much as, I mean, I sympathize with everything that was shared here regarding concerns. But if you see, the landscape of California in terms of housing is changing a lot. Right now, any single-family home in California, there is no more single-family home zoning, right? Like, in any lot, you can actually build four units, out of which even an ADU can be sold separately these days. So any unit, like in a six-thousand-square-foot family lot, if I have a single-family lot, my neighbor can actually build four units and sell them. And they are going to be looking into my background. So unfortunately, that's the reality of, of California housing crisis. Two years ago, with the blessings of this elite council, I'm the city council. We have went through hours and hours of process to do the general plan updates, you know, housing element and all that stuff. And this site was one, was there on, on that list of housing element sites. And if you see it, the allowed density, the project that is actually being proposed right now is actually on the lower side of the allowed density. And the other thing is, this is actually, if we go around, you know, Bay Area and look at how they are building this, this is one of the nicer projects to actually look at in terms of architectural elements and things like that. Having said that, like, you know, we went through so much process and spent so much time. And if we again have to keep doing this, it's, it's not a great precedence to act, that we are saying that, hey, you know, we are allowing, we are trying to solve the housing pros, problem from our side. So I'm not sure what is the precedence we are setting here by not allowing what we have agreed like two years ago or eighteen months ago. So I'm hoping, we, I am hoping we streamline.
Pam, Pam, you, you need to be quiet, please.
You had your time.
You had your time. Man, you had your time. Please, please.
So that's some of my time gone. So what I request here, you folks, is please set a precedence, a standardized format. That's one of the reasons state has asked for objective standards and stuff. So if we have already agreed to a process, let's follow the process and make it easy for everyone here. If there are traffic concerns that there will be overflow on the, you folks have the power to actually say, put parking restrictions on the streets. Hey, you can't park from like six PM to like eight AM in the morning on the streets. You, you still have that liberty to do that. Lastly, before I end, I want to take this opportunity to give my appreciation to the Campbell Planning Department on their recent award from the APA. I was exceptionally impressed by Tracy's knowledge of stuff in answering all the questions. My sincere appreciation to her for being so prepared and on top of things. And my appreciation to Roger for enabling such a team and leading such a team. Four years ago, when I tried to build my houses, it was not this far. I had to search myself and tell them, hey, this is the law. But now I'm seeing them seeing the law. So that's, that's a great improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Raja. Do you have anybody else?
That's it, Chair.
Nobody online?
Nobody online.
Okay, I'll, I'll close the
Sure.
Oh, yes, come on in. You, you, you get the three minutes.
Uh, thank you very much, and thank you for the neighbors, for their comments. I just wanted to touch really quickly on, on some of their, the concerns that were brought out. And also let the commission know. So about two years ago, when this was going through, and Valley Oak Partners, the owner of the property, first kind of contacted me for my assistance. I came out with a plan. So we had a plan, and I had sat down with the planning department. We knew that we were gonna have to wait, but this was something that we, I wanted to show early on. So I basically went to all the houses out to Virginia Park from our site, and there's only about six or seven. I went to the north and then across the streets. I apologized to the people in Sobrato because when I told them I did this, they said, hey, we're within three hundred feet. How come you didn't let us know? And I, and I said, I, I hadn't even thought about that. But I just went to the neighbors that were most affected. I actually personally knocked on the doors and had a copy of our thing, a little letter of introduction for myself. Said this is what we planned. Some people said, oh, Campbell's never gonna allow you to do that. And I was, tried to explain that the densification that's happening in the city is this was gonna be real. Some people were okay with it. The pastor to the immediate north welcomed it. But I just wanted to let the commission know that I did that. And then when I found out from Tracy that there were some letters that were written back in September or October, I reached out to those people to listen to their concerns. And I, and I don't believe that I've been able to satisfy their concerns. Again, really quickly, the traffic studies that were done, the counts weren't done for the Hexagon, but I believe that they were done for the EIR. And all traffic counts that are done, Matthew can confirm, are always when school is in session and on a non-holiday. So they try to get as accurate numbers during the weekday, not on a weekend. With regard to the construction site issue, I think that Charlie had brought up. Typically, what would probably happen is the construction staging area would be on-site, probably where the park is, as everything is kind of being built around it. And then the park would be the last thing that would be developed. CCNRs kind of came up. I, I guarantee that there will be a clause in the CCNRs that have to be approved by the city, by the way, prior to the final map getting approved, that will require two car spaces be made available. So that will be an element. Whether the HOA management company decides to enforce that is on them. But that's gonna be in the CCNRs. I can't get to all of the questions that came up because my time is running out. But I, I wish to continue to work with the people in Sobrato, the five homeowners that are behind us, to do whatever we can for privacy. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission might have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I do have a question, and it's regarding privacy. So I have, you've been, you've been appearing before us, as far as I know. I've been on the commission for almost three years. You know, since my first got on. And I find it out of character to go to Sobrato and say, I'll put trees on your property, you know. That doesn't seem like the Jim Sullivan that I know. Because I think, to me, that's not a genuine offer.
Yeah, if I could put them on, on my property, Commissioner Camp Car, I would do so.
Okay.
My civil engineer and my, and my architect, and my landscape architect, we looked at where the wall is going to be. We even looked at the deed. I mentioned the ten-feet that we owned on the other side of the fence.
Right.
The easement forbids us from actually planting, putting a structure or landscaping within that ten-foot area.
That is correct, you know. And I hundred percent agree with that. But if you were to rearrange the buildings on-site to make room for these trees, you will get your forty units, you get the privacy going, you know. And so it's, maybe it's the big park you have in the front that's, that's keeping the landscaping from happening. Maybe, you know. Because I'm a civil engineer, I actually work on projects like this. And so I'm not saying it's easy. I think it's a pretty challenging site with the odd dimensions.
Yeah.
But, you know, the people you're working with are, you know, professionals. They're actually, I happen to know them. And I think they're capable of fitting forty units for you in a way that is not so intrusive on the, on the people behind you. Now, you know, maybe even staggering the units, you know, may help. I mean, something, you know. So, so it's not, you know, people think, you know. I know I never had a neighbor behind me, but now that I do, I wish.
Yeah. And, and I hear what you're saying. And I think earlier on in the process, with the distance involved, we had not anticipated there being an issue. And, 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 you know, that could be on us typically. Like, if it was a next-door neighbor right next to us, it would make more sense. You know, the church is two-story structure that's right next to us. It's, I don't even know if there's any windows on that backside. So there's no privacy issues to our north, to our south, across the street that I'm aware of. You know, it sounds like it's more traffic-related there. We hadn't thought that eighty to a hundred feet away would elicit the, the concern that Mr. Wagner and his neighbors have, have spoken about. We hadn't thought that eighty to a hundred feet away would elicit the the concern that Mr. Wagner and his neighbors have have spoken about. But I'm I'm willing to work with the the planning department, with Rob and Tracy, and with the neighbors to and and that's why I kind of threw out to them, what else can I do besides trying to re-engineer my site, right? If I could pick up another five feet, I would love to do that, right, to give them that peace of mind. If I can't do that, I'm trying to come up with something else that I could do.
Have to talk with Santa Clara Valley Water District to see if they're willing to.
Yeah, we've talked with Santa Clara Valley Water District, not on that particular privacy issue. There's an outfall that's from our site, and it's been cut off. So none of I I know another one of the letters of concerns was, what about pollution into the channel? There is no water that from our development that's going into the channel. Everything is going out to Virginia. So we're actually, it's been severed, the existing outfall, and it will be capped.
I see, I see. Thank you.
Yeah. But I'm but but to again, to answer your question, I'm willing to work with the planning department to try to do what's possible. But I I redesigning our site at this point is not a a possibility for us.
Wes has any questions? Anybody?
So I I just have one more question, Jim. Um, I I expressed earlier that my dismay that we didn't see this sooner, the planning commission. Whereas we saw, I I know you've been involved. I know you I've seen you involved in other other developments. Um, you know, Llewellyn is the one that comes to mind because it's so recent, and that we have often seen an early version in in the early application stage. And yet, and and I is, you know, Tracy has talked about there's a threshold for the planning uh department to um for that to be required, but it would seem to me that you you could have had the option to uh to um say, I want to go in front of the planning commission early to get their input. Um, did you consider that?
Yeah, so it's a great question. And so what happened with Llewellyn was actually right before I did a pre-application because I, as a representing the property owner, was gonna make a general plan amendment and a rezoning request. And at the time I went, and so we actually bypassed the planning commission, go straight to the city council because they have to give approval to do that evidently in.
I understand.
Okay.
But it came it it came back to us to take a look at. I mean, we 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 looked at Llewellyn early as well.
Oh, did you guys?
Yes, we did.
I thought that I went directly. I know that I brought it up during the housing element and things like that. But for this, I I I would just say that when I came involved in this project, the city was already underway with their housing element in G P, and I was kind of battling to keep the density lower.
Right, right.
And and Rob wouldn't have accepted an application from.
I understand it was a delay because of the housing element, you know, and and the long thing, but I could swear we saw an early version of the development at at the planning commission. I I may be mistaken about that, but I'm pretty sure. And then we've seen other, we've seen other actually smaller, you know, we we we've seen them on Gilman, we've seen uh what on Winchester, we've seen uh, there's there's a number of them that I I've seen in the four years I've been on the commission. So I I was just, it 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 concerns me because this is our, you know, we get the we get the agenda on Friday, and we're here on Tuesday.
Yeah.
And and, you know, it's it's obviously of substantial nature, just by the 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 fact that the residents have concerns. So I I I'm I'm just, you know, in hindsight, you know, I I I'm just putting it out there to see, say that uh it would have been it would have been good for us to have been given input, uh, given you input
Yeah.
on so some of the things we talked about.
Yeah, no, agree, agree. And and and, you know, hindsight's kind of twenty twenty. If it had, if you got, if the city wasn't going through the housing element and it didn't take as long as it had, I'm sure that I would have had multiple opportunities to kind of in front of the planning commission and to, you know, air out, you know, uh, more concerns from the residents.
Well, they're just like, gone. Okay, uh, we have no more questions for you, Jim.
Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna close.
Public.
Chair, this is, can I?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna make sharing the record because I know you've asked this question twice. So when the the city adopted its general plan housing element, it did a major change to its zoning ordinance. And the intent was to push down the decision-making process and streamline housing applications. I I understand in years past, P D zonings or housing projects would go through numerative hearings and pre-application hearings for the planning commission. Those rules have changed dramatically. I I can't tell you today if Llewellyn came to the planning commission, my recollection is not, but to set expectations for the commission, the expectation is that the city uses the multifamily design standards. And generally, as Tracy mentioned, if it's a minor project, it goes to the planning commission. It's a major project, it goes to the council. There is no requirement for pre-application hearings for projects that go through that housing process. So I just want to make sure the planning commission is aware of that process, because I know you asked it a few times.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, let's uh, you want to start?
Um, Mr. Fields.
So here are the public comment, particularly on parking. But in this commission, we need to look at the laws and standards and have a reason to reject. And we we essentially cannot impose any parking standard. So I don't want to seem like we're not listening to the concern, but we like legally cannot require them to do more parking than they have done. So I hear you and understand this could be frustrating. Uh, but I think my job and the commissioner's job is to weigh in on the things that are sort of legally appropriate for us to do so, which in this instance is like unbelievably limited because of a bunch of jargony legal things. They mentioned like density bonus. So, uh, parking, I hear, um, traffic also feels like a like a valid concern, but based on our standards, I don't think we can require any particular change to the plan that's proposed. Um, the privacy argument I am sensitive towards. Uh, I don't, it is not obvious to me what we could require uh in terms of the application uh for them to do anything different, again, because for the most part, they've either complied with our objective standards or sought a waiver, which was their right. And so we barely boxed in. But if any of my other commissioners has any ideas about the privacy element, um, I'm sensitive to that. Um, but otherwise, I am supportive of this project because, again, my understanding is if we do not support initiatives like this, at some point, the state takes more and more control. You get builders remedy projects, and this would be a six-story development with five times the number of cars. I think everyone would be a lot more upset. And this feels like a easing of Campbell into larger housing projects and uh feels like what uh the developer mentioned about sort of matching the spirit uh resonated with me. So, um, would love to hear if anyone else has ideas on privacy, but otherwise in supportive.
Um, yeah, I um, I also just wanted to add that, yeah, um, I think as um, as the applicant stated, the um, the number of units that that this project is planning to build is on the low end of what they could build, that it's a range, and this is on the absolute lowest end. So I think, you know, even even without builders remedy and a whole bunch of other stuff, they could have built more units. Um, but I do think there's some opportunity for the city to um to take another look at some of the traffic flow issues that were mentioned by the residents as far as traffic on intersections, getting in and out. Um, it is a high-traffic area, and it is challenging when you're trying to get out of your driveway when there's a lot of through traffic, and there's gonna be an additional traffic, but the way the traffic patterns there that are there, um, Tracy, so if that's something you can um take another look at based on the feedback from the residents, that would be great. Um, the uh, the park, I already made the comments about that. I think those were heard. Um, and, yeah, hopefully there's some opportunity to work through the privacy concerns that were brought up. I mean, I guess, you know, it's eighty feet away, and it's, I think, thirty feet in height, if I'm not mistaken. So at least it's not eighty feet in height and eighty feet away, so that's a bit better. Um, I guess dimensionally, it's better than having a two-story next to you. Think about that geometry. Um, but it's still obviously a lot different than the way it is now. And those are my comments.
Uh, Commissioner Craig. This is a book one. This is a book one.
Have any notes here? Um, I think I'd like to clarify something for, um, I I've been hearing a lot about um, whoops, from, sorry. Here we go. Um, I think there's some misconceptions about the planning commission's authority here. Um, we don't violate state law. We will not deny this project in violation of state law. Um, because frankly, not liking state law is not a reason to deny the project. Um, something that our attorney did not mention, please correct me if I'm wrong. If we deny this project, get sued and lost, we can be fined, the city can be fined if it's ten thousand dollars per unit denied. This is forty units, so that's four hundred thousand dollars. Were shown to do it maliciously or in bad faith, that fine is multiplied by five, which makes two million dollars a city would pay out of pocket, and we'd lose anyway. I don't think that's actually come to it, but it's a real threat, as I understand it. So you do not have the right to conveniently park for free on the public street, which you do not own. I know that people are used to doing that. We do not have the authority to deny this project, specifically because in meetings like this for decades on end, these projects were denied here and in other planning commission meetings all over the state over and over again because people wanted to not see buildings in their backyard, or they wanted to have plentiful free street parking. So we can't do that now. I would hope that even if we could, we wouldn't sacrifice people's homes in the service of the convenience of parking for free on the public street, which nobody here owns. As staff will tell you, making it so you can park for free on the public street, which you don't own, is not a priority for the city. We do have options here. You can, um, we can meter the street parking, which is how you allocate things when they're scarce. You don't constantly give them away for free and wonder why there's a shortage. Uh, we could replace the parking and the sharrows with bike lanes, so nobody would park on the public street. Um, that would also buffer your driveways. That is an option. Um, I recognize this is a live discussion, and this may provide the illusion that the planning commission is weighing whether or not to approve this project. We do not have the authority to deny this project. We do not have the authority to tell them to add more parking. We do not have the authority to tell them to make the project shorter or different. So we cannot and will not do that. And I I truly feel for the public if we have given them the wrong impression on that. We can't do that. So I did have two follow-up questions for staff, uh, based on some things that were noted here. Uh, what does the city plan to do with seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in parks money?
Um, I believe the funds are used to uh maintain the parks that we have currently. Um, those funds, while they may be collected by the Department of Public Works, um, it's the rec department um, that has access to those funds to ensure that our parks are being maintained.
So for operations?
It's not general operations. It's uh, it's uh refurbishment of parks and yeah, so not ongoing regular maintenance operations.
Exactly. I just want to clarify that when park fees are collected, the intent is to uh expand existing parks, add, you know, tot lots to parks that may not have parks. Uh, we attempt to acquire more land for parks, but given the scarcity of land and the prices that developers are willing to pay for parkland, it's very challenging.
That wouldn't give you much land.
Um, hopefully, there'll be, you know, we also look at opportunities maybe to partner with school districts who are, you know, their campuses are um, not as utilized as they used to be, maybe some opportunities for some joint use agreements where a park could be, uh, you know, a portion of the the field could be repurposed as a city park and leased from from the school district. Uh, but the the fees are all collected under the Quimby Act, um, based on objective standards, and frankly, the fees are probably significantly less than what we could be collecting under the under the Quimby Act, so.
Thank you for your explanation. And, uh, second, um, do we know what this thing is with not being able to fix the driveway so you can exit them straight on? Is that a thing about historic driveways? Is that a thing?
Uh, I believe the comment is related to some of the driveways in which angle. Um, and so there are a couple of driveways in which you can pull right into the driveway and the garage um at a ninety-degree angle, but it looks like um from street view, there are a couple of driveways in which to access the garage, you're sort of making this half uh this curve to get into the driveway.
Yeah, if I can just elaborate, uh, looking at the street view, Tracy's correct. There are a few driveways. You know, a a lot of these older subdivisions were built with attached sidewalks where the developer only had to grant five feet of right-of-way. And the driveways were constructed in a way where it's not a a s- a straight slope driveway. There's like a, it's like if you look at the five feet, like three feet of it is apron, and then there's two level, two, two feet is like level to allow, you know, your your wheelchair or your, uh, you know, someone pushing a um, a stroller has some level space. I mean, generally, when we construct A D A compliant driveways today, like like say, one of those houses were to come in and be redeveloped and a new house would be built, we'd probably uh condition them to put in an A D A compliant driveway where the entire five-foot section that is now uh kind of a combination of the driveway and a level sidewalk, that would be a flat, I mean, that would be a straight graded smoother slope for the car to drive up. And then you would have like a four- or five-foot level sidewalk behind it. So that's one way you you can fix, they can be fixed.
Are they prohibited from re-grading that to a regular, more regular driveway?
So the challenge would be that in order to put in a real A D A compliant driveway there, the property owner would have to dedicate like a four- or five-foot public sidewalk easement at the back of the existing driveway to provide that necessary nine to ten feet that it would take to make a well-functioning A D A compliant driveway.
Okay, but they're not prohibited from doing.
No, there's no prohibition. It's just like a matter of cost.
Okay, thank you. Um, the only other things I'd like to add are, um, I'm glad that they didn't waive the solar panel requirement, and honestly, I'm glad that we're having an opportunity site developed as planned. We should be pleased. This is what we asked for. We asked to get like somewhere between I think it was eighteen and twenty-five dwelling units per acre, and we're getting between eighteen and twenty-five dwelling units per acre on an opportunity site within the eight years. This is a success. And I think we're kind of losing sight of that. That's what I have.
Commissioner Craig.
Right, no, I I would say I don't think we are losing sight of it. I I think that this is really, uh, this is just a precious site for Campbell. It's so rare to get a site like this. Uh, where we can really try to tackle a little bit of our housing crisis, and it is a crisis, and it's not just Campbell, obviously. It's not just the region. It's not just the state. It's, you know, it's the country and the world, so, uh, so we talk about these sites and we look at, you know, where we can do stuff and, you know, high-level stuff, and then when it comes down to an actual project, then the doubles in the details, and then good people like you are coming to our meetings saying, well, hold on, what the heck is going on? Because you've got completely valid legitimate concerns. I mean, who who the heck wants more density next to them? But, uh, you kind of got to look at the greater good versus the versus the evil, I guess, is is kind of the way to put it. I, uh, you know, I I I, you know, I I I don't know that the traffic and the parking will be as bad as as some people think, but I, yeah, I don't know. I don't live there. I I I certainly would be concerned too if I lived there because, uh, you know, our density is our de- is our destiny, and and it's it creates issues. The privacy issue, I I don't know uh, what could be done there with the with the people on Sobrato. I did look at the site, at the area there, and at least the developer sounds like they're willing to listen to you, so, uh, and has, you know, everybody's already stated here, A, you know, this is this is about as small as the project could be. And it's it, it's really kind of a shame that we don't have more affordable units on the site. Kind of an opportunity lost, in my opinion, there, uh. And then B, there's, you know, the uh, what we can do in terms of uh stopping, actually denying a project is very, 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 very limited, and and uh we can make some suggestions and try to do as much good planning as we can. We have we can make some suggestions and try to do as much good planning as we can. We have, you know, traffic calming measures we've mentioned and various things and, uh, just do the best that we can. But yeah, I think this is a, a good, a good project. The design's very nice and, uh, these are housing units that, you know, Campbell really needs. Thank you.
Corey? I didn't forget you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I have, we have to separate our personal feelings as planning commissioners from what the law is and allows us to do, but, um, you know, I, I live very close to this, um, project, far enough away to not be, you know, I can participate in this conversation, but I understand, you know, Bud is extremely, can be very fast traffic. People are coming off Santo Moss, same thing on the other side of the neighborhood. Um, it's very inconvenient. It's actually making me kind of feeling, um, uh, what's the word? I feel like I, I as a resident of this neighborhood should go on that website that was mentioned and ask for traffic calming in my neighborhood because I hear the drag racing that's going on. I, we get the people that don't stop, that don't slow down while I'm trying to walk my dog down the street, so I, I totally understand what you all are saying and, um, but like, or my other commissioners have said, we, we need housing. That's the biggest, one of the biggest issues we're dealing with and, um, yeah, but I, I encourage you all to keep, keep up your, your spirit of involvement in your city and what's going on and get some traffic calming measures on your street because I totally get it. Thanks, that's all I got.
Thanks, Corey. Mr. Kamkar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so, listening to my fellow tra, uh, planning commissioners, Commissioner Fields asked if there are any, um, possible solutions to the, the privacy. Um, well, one possible, one possible, um, solution is to maybe the developer can talk to the rear neighbors and see if there's a way they can raise the fence a little higher. And when I say raise the fence, maybe not with solid blocking, but it may be lattice or privacy type of lattice so that, um, the sun is not completely taken away, but, um, but it is to a point where privacy concerns are met. Um, you know, the other way would be to, uh, is to rearrange and I understand you're at a place where rearranging may not pencil out. But, you know, um, that doesn't mean that, you know, back with the neighbors, you know, um, I'm sorry, neighbors, you're too, you're too late to the game, so, um, I can't, I can't go for that, you know, I, uh, I want to make sure developer, you know, has done his due diligence and has done what he needs to do. When it comes to parking, I agree, we cannot force the developer to provide more parking. But developer can offer more parking by themselves. You know, and so, um, you know, uh, I know it's a delicate balance, but, you know, bringing more, more density, which by the way, I, I like the number of units you bring in, you know, I understand it's the minimum, but I like it. I think we have an obligation as planning commissioner for the policy of Campbell, not just for this neighborhood, to support projects like this. I just feel we can go a little bit further in, you know, um, making the, uh, neighbors more comfortable that you're doing what you're doing. Um, you know, I wouldn't be able to support what you have here, but if you had a little bit more parking, then I'd say, you know what? Maybe you don't need that big park in the front. Maybe some of it can be dedicated to parking. Um, and so, um, I just, I just think you have ninety percent of what you need, you just need to do that extra ten percent, you know, and um, as far as traffic in the streets, there are, like, like, you know, Matthew said, there are traffic calming measures. Um, in my previous life, I was on a, um, traffic appeals commission, not in this city, but the neighboring city. And residents would come and they ask for traffic blocks to discourage, you know, people from, uh, drag racing, you know, and of course, the same residents will suffer the fact of having to go over those bump over and over, over again, but at some point, um, things, things, you know, um, I think can be done. The, um, driveways, you know, that, um, uh, I know Roger addressed, those driveways, you could offer to say, I'll pay for you changing your driveway, you know, you take care of the easement portion of it to make the ADA. Or, you know, the project will pay you the construction cost to change the driveway from a sharp, you know, incline to a smoother incline, so. So those, those possibilities are available, you know, but like a commissioner, my first one said, we can't force you to do it, but you can offer it, you know? And we can say yes. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, so, um, I, I, I know that, my, my impression based on the other commissioners' inputs is that, you know, it's probably not going to make the residents happy tonight. So, um, I, I just want to reiterate, uh, uh, we had, a, a lot of our commissioners, uh, cover, um, a lot of the issues and, and what, what our, uh, ability is or lack of ability is in the planning commission to, um, we, you know, ask or require changes. I, I do have one question before I go on. Um, uh, parking restrictions on the street, um, uh, this is to staff. What's, I, I know that the, the city doesn't do parking permits in the neighborhoods. That becomes a bigger, that's a bigger city issue. Um, just so everybody knows, it's like, I don't think there's any parking permits in the city. Um, not even downtown, you know, for neighborhood permits. Am I correct on that?
There's one neighborhood.
There's one neighborhood? Okay. You want to cover, you want to?
Right, it's the Rosemary Eden neighborhood.
Rosemary Eden neighborhood.
That's the only.
So that's the one parking permit area?
Right.
Okay, so, so i- it's possible to, uh, approach the city about parking permits?
I think it would be difficult because you're pitting residents versus residents.
I, I can't hear you.
It would be difficult because you would be pitting one resident versus another.
Okay. I, I, I'm talking about a neighborhood parking permit. A neighborhood parking permit, right?
Okay, i- if you're talking in general, it's possible?
Yeah, you know, you know what I mean, where it's like a particular neighborhood, it's like during certain hours only the, there's only permitted parking. Like they do in Palo Alto or Los Gatos, right?
Right, at, at the moment, we only have one program.
Okay, we only have one, okay. Um, regarding, uh, curb restrictions, whether, if it made sense to, uh, restrict parking on the curb in some part of Virginia, uh, Virginia or wherever, if that made sense, i- i- is that something that the city can do?
You could do, but you could be creating problems because you would, what's to stop someone from parking even further into the neighborhood?
Say that again?
If you restricted curb parking, you could be creating another problem by encouraging people to park even further into a neighborhood.
Okay, alright. Okay, thank you. Um, so, I, I, you know, I have, uh, my own thoughts on, on the, um, just, just for the benefit of those here. Uh, I have actually less concern about the privacy issue now that I know that it's a eighty-foot distance. Uh, we've actually dealt with privacy issues a lot in the planning commission and, and we've act, uh, we've had, we've approved three-story, uh, construction next, right next to a, a two-story development where they're ten feet apart. It's like they're next door neighbors. And of course, the, the, the neighbors didn't like the three stories because it's like overlooks their backyard. So, um, we get, we also deal with when, uh, si, a line of sight for a, a two-story bill, uh, two-story home that's been put in and then the people behind them is like, they feel like, you know, their privacy, uh, and, and, you know, we do line of sight stuff and, and, uh, determine, you know, but there's an awful lot of homes that are backed up to each other that are closer than eighty feet. You know, where a two-story home is overlooking, uh, somebody's yard and a one-story home. So, so to me, you know, if it was less than eight, you know, eighty feet is a pretty long distance and, and I, you know, it's, it's, it's unavoidable to have this kind of thing happen in the new developments that are going on. It's just unavoidable. Um, I'm not a big fan of the three-story buildings myself and I've said that, but that's the standard now with developers. The three-story narrow townhomes are everywhere. That's all we see, the three-story townhomes. And it's, uh, uh, you know, um, with new developments because it maximizes, you know, their floor, their floor areas and they can, they can put in, is, you know, they can, they can maximize the density using that three-story, uh, configuration. So that's, um, that's what's happening and, um, yeah, I'm not a big fan of three stories, but that's, that's, that's what's happening and it's acceptable to, um, uh, in terms of both state and local law. Um, I, I, I think, uh, with regards to the, the parking, I, I think there's a lot of speculation, you know, uh, you know, uh, uh, one of, uh, one of the, he's talked about worst case, well, you know, it, we don't really know how many cars there are going to be in the development. Um, there may be, there may be two cars per unit, there might be three cars per unit and, and I, I don't see necessarily four cars per unit simply because it's a four-bedroom. I don't think you can do that math. It, it, there may be some units where there's four adults living in it and they all have their own cars. I, I get that, but I, I don't think it, it, it makes sense to speculate this big number when we really don't know. Um, as far as, as far as people parking in their garages, like we have no control over that. Um, uh, I would like to think that in, in these kind of planned developments where people pull in, you know, it's like they're going, you know, they live in the back, uh, they, you know, they live within the development, they're actually going to use their garages. I would hope so. Um, but I, I certainly understand the concern about, about, uh, getting more parked up, more traffic. These are things that we, we know is, um, is happening and, and, and has potential for. We just, we just looked at a big development of a hundred and eight units off of the well, the lawn, which is near where the US post office is in Hamilton. And it's in a residential neighborhood and there were concerns about parking, but, and, uh, the same developer is doing that, but we, we have our hands tied. They've meet, they've met all the criteria here based on state law. Um, if you haven't followed all the things that have been going on for the last three or four years on housing in the state, you should, you, you should be familiar. I didn't know anything about housing elements before I got on the commission and then suddenly I became incredibly familiar with housing elements. And it's, it's just this new cycle where it's all come to fruition. Uh, housing elements are in an eight-year cycle and they've been going on for fifty years. This, we're in this, we're in the sixth or seventh cycle, okay? So, but before this cycle, the numbers were modest. The state tripled and quadrupled the number requirements in the cycle. So when, when the Campbell had a nine-hundred unit requirement in the past eight years, it's now twenty-nine-hundred. Okay? And that's a lot of units that the state is saying the cities have to change their zoning and their codes to accommodate. That doesn't mean it's going to get built, but we have to accommodate it so that there are parcels available to put in higher-density units. That's just the law. And so, um, our hands are pretty tight here. Um, Mr. Buckbender says we're required to approve this. Well, you know, in theory, you know, the commission could, could reject it, but it would go to the council and the council would approve it. So, but, but we have a commission that wants to follow the law, wants to do, uh, looks at what the criteria is and makes those decisions based on that as, as Commissioner, um, Fields had indicated. So, uh, we're all, you know, we're all residents of Campbell. I've been a resident of Campbell for forty years. And I've lived in three different neighborhoods. I get it. But, you know, this is a new world and, um, to be honest, uh, we don't have much choice if we want to follow the law. So I'll leave it at that. Um, I, I, I want to mention something about somebody to be concerned about the construction. Well, you know, the city has a standard, um, standard, uh, very long, uh, procedure for construction uh, and, and how it needs to be done and how it needs to minimize, you know, uh, the, the problems in the neighborhood during construction. So that's all set. And, and the developers hopefully follow that and, and the city oversees that. So, um, that's the nature of, of things is that the construction happens and, and there will be, there'll be stuff being done. Um, hopefully with, with a minimum amount of, um, of, uh, noise and dust and all that stuff. So, but that's all, that's all, that's all listed, actually. It's included in, in the agenda. So, um, I'll, I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that. And at this point, um, any other, any other comments, questions?
I just wanted to add one more thing. Um, I think there might be a sense that, um, we as a city have no control over this. Uh, to emphasize, as, as Mr. Apola said, uh, we had a years-long general plan process and a very intense housing element process, which all of us were here for, I believe, um, where we decided this place is going to have, you know, eighteen to twenty-five dwelling units per acre and it's going to be a housing opportunity site. Like, there was a ton of public input for this. Like, we're just following through on the rules that we had set in the first place and we can't just change the rules after we make them now. Throw on to say.
Good point, Mr. Commissioner Buckbender. Commissioner Kamkar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, you know, I rarely disagree with Commissioner Buckbender, but in this case, I have to disagree. Um, and, and, and here's my point. If we cannot deny this, why did it, why does it come in front of us? We're not rubber stampeders. We're here to think about the projects and say yes or no. If we cannot deny it, then it shouldn't come to us. It should just go directly to the council.
I think you mean it should just be ministerial, but we can deny it. It'll just cost the city two million dollars if we do that.
Right, I mean, no, no, we, we definitely don't want to do it for that reason, but, 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 you know, to say that we have to have so many units so we can't deny it, that's, I have a little bit of a problem with that. We like the number of units. We like what they've done. We just think they haven't gone far enough to, to, to satisfy the neighbors. That's all I'm saying.
I understand, and the, the reason we can't do that anymore is because we and every other city has a history of using that kind of reasoning to delay, deny and delay projects. It's what happened, it's why there's a, a mud pit out in, um, at Del Grande project because we spent eight years saying, no, we don't quite like it like this and now it's a mud pit. And we're, we're, these are the consequences of our own actions.
Right, I definitely hear you and I, you know, I, uh, usually don't criticize plans that I know how much effort has gone into it. It's just that in this case, I don't understand the need for that big park when they are sort of, you know, forty units and not enough parking, tandem units, they almost always the back unit gets, gets filled with junk and maybe the front one gets parked on, but, um, uh, you know, I just, I just feel that there is more that developer can offer and, um, so, that's, that's my piece. Thank you.
Okay, well, just in response to that, Commissioner Kamkar.
We, we do have three more items and it's
I know, I know. I just want to say that, you know, we, we have no, we have You know, we, we have no, we have no, we have no practical criteria for denying this. There is nothing that says, there's no objective standards that, that aren't being met. There's, there's the density bonus law that overrides. So there, there is no, we can't ask, we can't deny it because we want them to re-engineer it, which is way too late in the process. So i- if we had some particular thing that, per the general plan, per, per our state law or our law, where we could honestly deny it, then I'm happy to consider it. But the fact is that, you know, by saying they, to, they could move the buildings around at this point, we, we can't ask them to do that. We, we can't ask them to change the design if it meets all the criteria, which apparently it does. So I, I understand where you're coming from, but, you know, we, we have to, again, as, as others have said, we have to look at the law and, and follow the law. So anybody else kind of got comment? Okay. Do I have a motion? Well, let's say that Commissioner Kamkar might want to try a motion where you try, where you add a, another provision to the resolution that, I don't know what, that the developer works with though. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I second the city's opinion. See if that is going to cause trouble.
Yeah. You, you need to, yeah.
Probably a little premature till I know what the motion's going to be. I would just add that while if this were, if there were not a pre-app here, a pre-application involved, you would be allowed to add conditions based on subjective determinations. As long as it, you know, doesn't reduce the density of the project or result in the, in the below-market rate units becoming infeasible. Since there is a pre-application, the law actually expands the requirement with regard to objective criteria and says you cannot apply conditions unless they are based on objective criteria as well. So you're further restricted.
So, so traffic issues, let's say, let's say the traffic issues, you know, those are not, those, I cannot come up with extra conditions to maybe relieve some of the traffic issues or some of the off-site parking issues, you know?
If you can point to some objective criteria in our ordinances or general plan that, that relates to those, then you could. But you do have to point to some objective criteria.
Can I, can I ask a question about, about the back? Can we, can we do an amendment? I, I guess it's subject to whether, whether this can be worked out independently of us or not. The, the, the back area where the idea of going to an eight-foot fence with lattice, can that be, can that be offered as, as an amendment?
Yes, that, that you, you could raise the height of the fence or lattice. There are findings you have to make, which actually I was looking at a little earlier in anticipation that this might come up. Let's see if I can find what I was looking at here. Do you guys still have it? Oh, yes, I do, I do. You would need to adopt additional findings that the change in the fence, fence height would not impair the pedestrian or vehicular safety, that it would not result, that it would result in a more desirable site layout, would not be detrimental to the health, safety, peace and morals, morals and comfort or general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood as a result of the change. And would not be, or is that what I just read? Would not be detrimental or injurious to property and improvements in the neighborhood or to the general welfare of the city.
That sounds like an eight-foot fence in the back would be, let me confer with this attorney.
Are we talking about the, what are we doing this in service of, for the property?
To, to help with privacy in the back.
Properties across?
No, yeah.
Well, it, it, it blocks, it blocks the road.
It blocks the view. See, two feet at, at fifteen feet away is the same as ten feet, eighty feet away. It just, you know, the line of sight.
I'd like to make a motion. Adopt a resolution referencing that we're approving a minor housing development project permit intended to vesting subdivision map to allow the construction of forty-unit townhome-style condominium units and creation of six private lots, nine common lots and the associated site improvements, use of density bonus law waivers and concessions from the zoning code, multi-family development design standards, MFDS, and finding part of category exempted sections fifty-three-hundred-point-two and fifty-three-thirty-two of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Well, yeah, except I didn't get an answer to the, the two-foot then. You guys were conferring.
Say I think we're conferring, but if this, if it's not part of your motion, you can move forward. If you still have a question.
I'll, I'll second it.
So it's, it's too late for an amendment?
No.
It's not a friendly amendment.
What?
You can offer a friendly amendment, but I don't think.
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to add, to, to, to make the back fence two, two-foot high, two-foot higher to eight feet.
Given that everyone was concerned about the second and third floors having a view, I don't think the two, two, two-foot fence is going to date them.
I'm not interested in placating anybody. I'm just.
I don't think it's going to address people's concerns.
Does anybody else?
You want to do a straw poll?
Does anybody else have interest in this?
I would.
You would? Anybody else?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
The friendly amendment does.
All right. That's fine. Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second. Take a vote. Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Crave?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Commissioner Kamkar?
No.
Chair Sizer?
Aye.
So it passed, is, oh, I'm sorry, Corey? Oh, you got her? Okay. Passed at six to one. I, I want to thank everybody for their input and thanks to staff for their work on this. Thank you. Does anybody want to take a break?
Yes.
Can I suggest that we do the wait? Use permits and.
And then take a break?
Study session for, and delay the study section for the next meeting. I have a kid who wakes up at six AM and.
I hope we can do that legally.
Can, can we, can we, at this point in time, move an, an item?
You, you could continue the items. I'll just say, well, they're shot, they're certain.
I'm just talking about the last item.
You could. I mean, we've made commitments to the council to get that item to the council as quickly as possible. But if, if the commission wishes to continue that item, you could.
Well, it says you're doing it on the August twentieth.
Yeah.
So if we continued it to the next planning commission, wouldn't that? I mean, I understand you're balancing a lot of stuff, but just curious.
Why don't we do this? We're taking a five-minute break. Let me confer with staff to make sure.
Is this before us again for the floor?
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm with you. Okay, so can we push the last item out?
So Chair, this is our commissioners. Understand it's eleven o'clock at night and there is an intent to continue item eight, which is inclusionary housing ordinance. So as I did mention, we have set expectations goes to council on the twentieth. We can bring it to you on August thirteenth. There's some challenges we'll have on a quick turnaround, but it's feasible. So understand it's late in the day. It's the will of the commission. Staff is here to serve that item, but if you believe it's better for you to deliberate on a fresh mind at a later date, you can continue it to the thirteenth.
I think there's a consensus on that in the commission.
I would make a motion, you could take that order and continue the item just so the public.
Do I, do I have to do anything official? Do we have, you have to vote on it? Okay. Should we do that right now?
I'll move to continue item eight until the, the meeting of the August thirteenth.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Place your vote. Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Crave?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Professor Kamkar?
Aye.
Chair Sizer?
Aye.
I, I wish to apologize wholeheartedly to the planning folks who've been sitting over there waiting for this item. Steven, Sally?
Sorry. Sorry.
I hope to see you on the thirteenth.
Don't hold us against us.
Oh, it's thirty or eighteen?
Thirteen.
Second Tuesday.
Did you say eighteen? Rob, did you say eighteen?
No. Second Tuesday. Item six. You ready?
Yes.
Nineteen forty Hamilton Avenue, conditional use permit. Public caring to consider the request of modulus on behalf of Chevron Zinc to establish a child daycare center within an existing office building on property located nineteen forty Hamilton Avenue. Application includes a conditional use permit, file number PLN two oh two four dash five five. Staff is recommending the site deemed categorically exempt from CEQA. Planning commission action is final. I must appeal to the city in writing to the city clerk within ten calendar days. Project planner, Larissa Roman.
Thank you, Chair. The project before you tonight is a conditional use permit to request to establish a daycare center within an existing office building at nineteen forty Hamilton Avenue. The project site is located at nineteen forty Hamilton Avenue in a zone PO professional office with a lot area of approximately twenty thousand square feet. The existing building was previously a single-family dwelling, which was since converted into an office through conditional use permit in twenty thirteen. The site is surrounded generally by a mix of professional offices, multifamily uses and other single-family residences. The applicant proposes to establish a commercial daycare center within the existing commercial building and convert the garage into a trash room. The proposed daycare will operate with hours, with staff hours from six AM to eight PM, Monday through Friday, and with business hours for public from seven AM to seven PM. The proposal includes the required indoor and outdoor play areas meeting both state standards and also standards found within the Campbell Municipal Code to include thirty-five square feet per child for indoor play areas and seventy-five square feet per child in the outdoor areas as seen here. The daycare will provide eleven parking stalls, including these two new stalls that will be created by removing one non-protected oak tree and replacing it with a similar species on-site as conditioned. And as mentioned earlier, the existing garage will be renovated into a trash room consisting of city standards. To minimize traffic impact, the daycare will implement a staggered drop-off and pick-up times as indicated on the screen and within the conditions of approval. Early drop-off for six children will be from seven, seven AM to eight, eight AM. The main drop-off for the other twenty children will be from eight AM to nine AM and staggered pickup times will occur in the afternoon. The city's traffic engineer has reviewed the site plan and the traffic plan and confirmed compliance with traffic safety and operational standards and does not object to the project as proposed. For this reason, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving the conditional use permit to establish a child daycare center at nineteen forty Hamilton Avenue. The project meets all the required findings and complies with the applicable zoning and general plan policies. And I can now take questions at this time, and the applicant is also online and can take questions as well.
Okay. Let me start with Commissioner Buckbinder.
That's a very thorough presentation. I, I, I'm sorry. Wait. That was a very thorough presentation. Thank you very much. I have no questions.
Mr. Cray? Yeah, Larissa, this was a, we had another project on this site, right? Couple, couple of projects that they, they fell through?
The applicant is online to speak to why.
Yeah, we could ask him.
Why they didn't happen, but yeah, there was previously a, an application for, to demo the existing building and to build.
They were gonna move the, they were gonna move that one building, right? Okay. This is the same site? Yeah, I thought it was. Well, my only question for you then otherwise is, so the staggered pickup, and I, did you say that is a condition?
Yes, it is part of the conditions of.
So we can mandate that? Okay. All right, thank you. You wanna go or you want to wait?
I won't wait.
Mr. Ostrowski?
Thank you. That was a thorough report. No questions for you.
Thank you for staying so late. No questions.
Mr. Kamkorn?
So, um, the, what did he do to the building? You know, to make a short proof this?
No proposed changes to the building. The hours of operation will be within standard operating hours as, as demonstrated in the conditions of approval. There will be an outdoor play area, as demonstrated here on the site plan, and that will be used in addition to the proposed new parking stalls will be the only changes to the site.
Was this place ever used as a child, as a daycare before?
Prior to operating as a professional office, this was a single family residence.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I actually think it was like an office, somebody's, like a law office or something like, but, and this was where they were gonna put in the new fancy, modern office building, right? So I, I have a question about, I'm sorry, I have a couple of questions. I, I was, I was questioning about whether or not we have, in terms of, of design, since it's, it's gotta be designed internally as, as a childcare center, it's like, do we, are there standards that we have to make sure they meet in terms of, you know, the interior, internal design, interior design?
Yeah, as codified in the city's municipal code, consistent with state law for this type of facility, we are mandated to require the facility provide 35 square feet per child of indoor play area. As you can see here on this slide, the existing interior is being repurposed into the various play areas. However, no proposed changes to the floor plan are being made.
Okay.
I think the question you're trying to get at is like, safety, receptacles, but that's all governed by like daycare, you know, licensing.
Correct. The city does have certain standards.
Best loans, stuff like that.
Yeah. City does have certain standards as codified, which this proposal meets all of those standards. In addition to those standards, there's other licensing requirements put forth by the state and also by the San Steyer County Fire District as well.
Okay, great. So I, I just wanted to understand why there's a maximum number of staff? Of five, or whatever it is? Why is there a maximum number?
Parking is dictated by both the number of staff and the number of children, so in order to meet their parking requirements, they had to limit both the number of staff and the number of children.
Okay. And the only other thing I had was, they have a late pickup till 7:00 p.m., but they're closing at 7:00 p.m. I, I, you know, they don't have to close at 7:00 p.m. We could give them till 8:00 p.m. Okay? And I was wondering if, whether or not we need to just adjust that so that they have, after, after the last one's out, that they still have time to be there?
Yes. That is, 7:00 p.m. is their close of their business operations, but internally staff has until 8:00 p.m. to continue operations.
I guess I missed that. Oh, I see, 8:00 p.m. Okay, I guess I just missed that. Thank you. I have no other questions. One more, Larissa, do you know if that school or the church, do they have childcare already?
Well, I'm, I'm not aware. There's no concentration requirement as part of the analysis, so that wasn't part of the review.
I've got one more question too, please. So is the applicant, the same applicant as for the big office project?
Yes.
So is the applicant the owner of the property as well?
Yes, and the applicant is available online.
Okay.
If we have any questions, I'll, I'll open it up. And the applicant can, if they wish, the applicant wished to say something, he got five minutes.
David or Trevor, whoever would like to speak on behalf of the project can do so now.
This is Trevor Zink. I am the applicant and owner. I don't have anything to add. I appreciate the work that the planning commission has done and look forward to repurposing the building.
Okay. Does anybody have a question for the applicant?
No.
Commissioner Kamkorn?
Thank you Chair. So can you tell us what happened with the previous application that, you know, I know you got planning commission approval for that office project?
Yeah, it's pretty simple. I started that process in 2019. It took three and a half years to get city approval, and by that time, office space was 30% vacancy and banks weren't lending.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir. Thanks, Trevor.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak on this? Okay, I'll close.
I'm supportive of using an empty space. Great to look out for kids and give it one more place to go in the community for people with young families. Supportive.
I agree. Let's get this approved.
Okay. Commissioner Buckbinder?
As somebody who has a kid who will need daycare, who need daycare, there's no obvious reason not to do this. There would have to be some kind of other reason, which there's not, so I'm in support.
Yeah, it's fine, fine with me.
Fine with me as well.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I loved the little building. I was sad to see that it was maybe gonna have to be demolished, so it's great that we're keeping the building, and I think this is a great, great use for it, because, you know, that's what we need, is more daycare. So I, I think it's a, it's a great, it's a, it's a, it's a great business to put in there, and so I, I certainly support it. Do I have a motion?
Corey.
Oh, Corey, I'm sorry.
Sounds good to me, thank you.
Hi, this is David Fenster. I'd like to comment if possible.
Did she, did she already come? Okay. So, um, so can we have a motion? I think that's where we're at.
I move that we adopt a resolution, we're proposing tax one, approving conditional use modification permit.
Second?
Second.
Vote? Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski?
Sorry, David Fenster has his hand up on Zoom call.
Want to allow it? Yes.
Do you want to allow the applicant to speak?
Did somebody? Did, did, would the applicant last speak some more? You got your hand up?
Yeah, I just, can you guys hear me okay?
We were gonna take a vote.
Okay, yeah, I just had two quick comments that I was hoping to make. One, I wanted to communicate my appreciation to Larissa. I think she did a fantastic job during the entire process. I don't think we say thanks to our planners quite enough for the hard work that they do. Secondly, and I know this is a lot to ask, however, I'd love to have the last two and a half hours of my life back, so if there's a way in the future that we can understand what, what issues are gonna take really long periods of time, which might move quickly, that would greatly appreciate it for, for future events. Thank you.
Yeah, you're, you're, you were, if I got that right, you were, you know, you were at the end of the agenda, so I guess my only response to that was that the, the agenda was published, and I guess, I guess, you know where you stood on, in the agenda, but I get what you're saying, and I certainly apologize for you having to hang out for this many hours, but, you know, maybe, I mean, this was a rare occurrence for us to have this many agenda items, so if it happens again, hopefully maybe we'll be able to deal with that. Thank you for your patience, though. Okay, can we start? Can we, we had a motion and a second. Can we do the vote again? Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Ostrowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Cray?
Aye.
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Aye.
Professor Kamkorn?
Aye.
Chair Caesar?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Ostrowski has to leave. Okay. Last item. 266 East Campbell, conditional use modification permit. Public caring to consider request of top architecture on behalf of Marjorie Ratin, Tintin Retomte. Formalize outdoor seating within a rear patio of an existing quick service restaurant with onsite alcohol sales, late night hours of guapos on property located 266 East Campbell Avenue. The application includes a conditional use modification permit file number PLN 2023-129. Staff is recommending deciding to deem categorically exempt from CEQA. Planning Commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within 10 calendar days. Larissa?
Thank you Chair. The project site, as mentioned, is at 266 East Campbell Avenue. However, the project site is consisting of two parcels under the same ownership as depicted on the screen, located on the south side of East Campbell Avenue between First Street and South Second Street in downtown Campbell, within the CBMU zoning district. The parcels are separated by a 15-foot wide alleyway that is parallel to East Campbell Avenue, commonly referred to as Pine Avenue. The front parcel is approximately 6,000 square feet and developed with a 3,000-square-foot single-story building with two tenants. This is El Guapo's Tacos, which is the tenant applying for this conditional use permit, and Cardiff Lounge, which is a standalone bar. The rear parcel is largely undeveloped and contains additional parking stalls and the existing trash enclosure. El Guapo's previously operated as tacos and has been in operation since 2009. They originally operated under a 2004 permit that allowed late-night hours with beer and wine sales until about 2:00 a.m. In 2011 and 2012, there were subsequent modifications to that original permit that expanded the interior seating and another modification that allowed spirits in addition to beer and wine and allowed operation till 1:30. During the COVID-19 pandemic, the city introduced guidelines in 2021 to help businesses survive, allowing outdoor seating. El Guapo's utilized these guidelines and set up the existing rear patio, which we see on screen. In 2023, as things returned to normal, the city ended these temporary allowances, but El Guapo's decided to keep their patio and has now applied to formalize it through this CUP process. The submitted application for a conditional use modification permit would formalize the outdoor seating within a rear patio of an existing quick service restaurant with a full-service bar and late-night hours. The outdoor patio will feature 19 seats, 30% of the current indoor capacity, with business hours for the patio operating from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. daily. The application is a modification to the current use permit, most recently PLN 2012-81. The new proposal will supersede any previous use permits. The existing quick service restaurant, which has a full-service bar and operates with late-night hours, will continue to operate as it does now with the addition of this rear patio. This slide shows the existing site and operational details under the previous permit in blue, as well as the proposed modifications, which we see here now in red. The Campbell general plan and downtown development plan ensure that alcohol-serving restaurants focus primarily on food service, with policies prevent restaurants from turning into bars or nightclubs. And in review of this application, the project was determined to align with these policies as required. Alcohol service will complement meal service, and the bar area will only total about 19% of the total seating, including this new outdoor patio. The restaurant will continue to offer full-service menu at all times, and standard conditions will enforce these operational requirements. In considering any noise implications of introducing outdoor dining, staff did review surrounding land uses, operational parameters, and any applicable general plan policies, and found the proposal to be compliant. As shown on the slide, the establishment is located more than 200 feet from any residential use. The outdoor patio will also have a standard operating hours and will close at 11:00 p.m. No live entertainment or amplified noise will be permitted, and the conditions of approval are allowed and have been established in place to allow this community development director to make adjustments if noise complaints are received. In terms of parking and site access, no parking is required for the proposed rear patio because the project site is within a half mile of the light, the downtown light rail station for AV 29 to 7. However, there is access to public parking facilities in downtown Campbell that patrons can utilize if they would like. Furthermore, the project is not expected to generate more than 110 trips daily, which is below the threshold for requiring a traffic study. And furthermore, the city's traffic engineer did not object to the project as conditioned. The project also aligns with the CBMU design requirements and the downtown development plan. It supports pedestrian-oriented activities and enhances the streetscape. It also serves to activate that rear alleyway by putting more eyes on the street. The proposal meets all these design standards and policy guidelines as outlined in this plan, the downtown plan. It also encourages outdoor dining, will increase foot traffic, and activate the streets as further described. So for that reason, staff does recommend that the planning commission adopt a resolution. This will be the resolution included in your packets as a desk item for item seven, with updated language to approve a conditional use permit, PLN 2023-129. And a summary of those changes were included in your desk guide and email as well. This concludes staff's presentation. I can now take questions at this time, and the applicant is also, has been waiting and is here, and the council chambers is available for questions as well.
Okay. I apologize to the applicants for, for being here. I guess you've been here all the time, Seth. But Commissioner, Commissioner Fields?
Thank you. Only question is noise complaints? Or sometimes we have the police come to say, are they good with this? Like, has this outdoor bar generated any of those?
The city does have a process for reviewing potential complaints due to noise, police, et cetera, which is listed as a condition of approval, I believe it's number seven, with how we deal with those complaints and how we can potentially modify those conditions of approval to curtail complaints. This application has been reviewed by the Campbell Police Division, and the police department has not proposed any additional changes to the proposed operation and is not objective to the project as commissioned.
Got it, thank you.
Commissioner Buckbinder? I'll get to you, Corey, soon.
All this seems entirely reasonable. If there were objections, we would refer the police department, and as I understand it, this back porch is already operating, we're just making it permanent, which I'm a fan of outdoor dining, it's fashion-oriented, that's why we have a general plan in support.
Corey?
Everything Commissioner Buckbinder said, thank you. Thanks, Larissa.
Mr. Cray? I'll just ask, is the Cardiff Lounge also used in the outdoor area, or is that just El Guapo?
No, the outdoor patio has been conditioned to only be utilized by El Guapo's patrons, and one of the conditions of approval will be the installation of a gate that operates only in one direction, so patrons can leave the El Guapo's patio but will not be allowed to reenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the construction of this thing, is it sturdy enough so if an errant car was gonna plow through, can be stopped, you know, like maybe K rails on the side and?
The 15-foot alleyway, the speeds of the traffic is generally low because, due to the narrowness of the alleyway, the, the depth, so cars are not anticipated at traveling at such high velocities that this would be an issue. There are existing decorative planters, as well as a fence that has been erected to provide adequate buffering between patrons and the alleyway.
Okay. Right, you know, I, I certainly agree with you for normal traffic. I'm thinking about car that doesn't follow the, you know, the rules of speed limits. That's why I'm asking, can it, can it, can it utilize something that's, offers a little bit more protection?
Was a consideration as part of the review, the patio and the fencing is already existing. There are existing planters which provide. Uh, wasn't a consideration as part of the review, uh, the patio and the fencing is already existing. There are existing planters which, uh, provide, um, some, uh, additional reinforcement. Uh, additionally, this, the, due to the nature of the alleyway, as opposed to a street or a typical public right of way with direction of traffic on both sides, where people are traveling at high speeds. Um, maybe at that point, that would have been a consideration, but for this back alleyway, it was.
And, and there has not been any close calls or anything that police departments ever?
No, uh, so far at this time, and the, um, uh, uh, applicant is here can speak to, uh, any considerations as well.
Okay, I will wait for that. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I, I, the, the only serious question I had was for you, for you is the, um, the egress ingress, the egress, uh, uh, gate. The, the, so the gate, the, so people can leave from El Guapos back patio to the card, through the Cardiff back. The gate goes to the back of Cardiff's area. So I don't understand why, why tha, that's, why the gate is going that way? Why, why doesn't the gate, why isn't there a gate going to the back parking lot?
Well, it does open up into an area, as you'll see on your screens. This is the proposed, um, patio configuration. Uh, this is, uh, where the door, the back door of El Guapos is situated. Um, this is an existing storage structure here, and then this is where the existing patio has been walled off. Um, there will be a proposed gate here which will allow, uh, egress, uh, but not reentry. Um, the bar Cardiff does have late, later hours of operation than this outdoor patio, which is terminating at eleven PM, consistent with the downtown alcohol beverage policy. So the concern would be that, uh, patrons would exit from, uh, a Cardiff lounge and, uh, potentially loiter or, uh, hang out in this, within this area. Rather than that, because the gate has been installed, uh, members of this Cardiff lounge will not be able to enter, uh, back into the El Guapos establishment. They all have to be filtered out either into the parking lot or into the alleyway.
Yeah, I get that. I ju, I'm just not sure why there's a gate that's leading to the back of Cardiff. Why not have no gate so that they have to exit, they have to go out the front door? If they want to go to Cardiff, then they have to go next door through the front door. I, I, I'm just not sure i, if, if that's something we should be encouraging is that the, that the, that the gate is going to the bar next door?
There, uh, per building code, there has to be multiple points of egress. So for El Guapos, there needs to be a point of egress here. So there has to be another, once you've exited into the patio, there has to be another point of egress. We do have to allow people to exit from this back door, uh, the same way as Cardiff as well. So people do need to maintain these exits, um, the the proposal of the gate is to avoid reenter to the El Guapos.
Yeah, yeah, I get that. I was just thinking they'd have a back gate.
Um.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, this was considered, um, by the, uh, city's, uh, building plan checker, and she felt that this was a consistent, uh, layout, uh, with the, uh, with the state's building code.
Okay. All right, uh, the only other question I have really is probably for the applicant. Um, so I'll, I'll wait for that. Um, okay. Anybody else? Any other questions? Okay, um, I'll close that and open it up for, um, uh, for public and the applicant can come up and you got five minutes if you want.
But we'll, you're, yield our time given the late hour and just answer questions if there are any. We want to do, we do want to thank the planning department for their hard work. Larissa was phenomenal, and it's taken a long time to get here, so we appreciate everything.
We appreciate you being, hanging in there. Uh, anybody have questions? Commissioners? Mr. Campcorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to ask about safety of the back patio. Can you address how you would, um, keep those guys safe from an errant car?
So the current planters that are there right now that you see in between the fences are actually solid concrete planters. They're about three hundred and fifty pounds each. So there's, there's not, and, and Larissa's right, it is a, an easement. Um, there's not a lot of, uh, high traffic going through there. People come to park, but the, um, the planters are quite heavy. Um, so it's not just a flimsy wood fence that's, that's there currently.
The, the platform is off the ground, like by one or two steps, correct?
There's no platform. What you're seeing off to the right there is an existing curb and an existing planter box that already has trees in it. Um, all we did is put up the additional planters on the perimeter and the fence during the, during COVID to create the outdoor seating.
And then you have not had any near misses or any?
None. None.
Okay.
In three years, no problems.
That's good. Thank you.
And, and I can actually answer your question about the, the patio. When you're talking about Cardiff, Cardiff is a forty-eight license. A forty-eight license is alcohol only. They're not allowed to have outdoor use. They can't have an outdoor patio. So their back door is only for people leaving their business. So they have a security guard at that door, so nobody takes alcohol out the back door because that's illegal for them. They'd lose their license. So people leaving Cardiff on that side, that open area you see there, we just want to put some bike racks so people can come, park their bikes, walk around the front, come into our restaurant, and then come into the back patio. And the gate back there is for them to be able to leave, um, like she said about egress and be able to get to their bikes.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any question? No? Okay, so you every time, uh, uh, you know, a restaurant, uh, or a bar comes up, I, I look on their website. And so your hours are to one thirty AM and, you know, uh, an eleven PM outdoor, but, but your website hours are, 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 don't match up. They actually are, you know, lesser, you know, you close, you close at midnight and you open it at eleven AM. Which one of these do you do?
So the hours that you're seeing on there are what they call, uh, operating hours, and that's when our staff is there till the very end cleaning. So we don't stay open till one thirty. We, during the week, uh, we've actually closed before this meeting ended, by the way. Yeah, so.
So your, your website hours are more like what they really are?
Yeah, we're a restaurant, right? We close at nine PM during the week, and we close between eleven and eleven thirty on the weekends. But that one AM typically, if we're closing at eleven thirty, our people are there till one, cleaning the kitchen, you know, mopping, things like that.
And, and you know that the only reason I ask this is we had another situation come up recently. Um, that as a restaurant serves alcohol, you have to have the kitchen open.
Hundred percent, yes.
Hundred percent, right? So you guys, I, I can come in and get a burrito at eleven thirty, right?
Hundred percent.
Okay.
We are a restaurant. We are a restaurant that has a full bar. You can get a margarita, but we are a restaurant all the time. We have, we have been since two thousand twelve.
And that's a condition on, on the?
Yeah, I know that. I just just let it confirm that.
Yeah. We have no desire to be, to be a bar.
The kitchen, kitchen's open.
Yeah, if, if we, if we wanted to be a bar, we wouldn't have given away our two AM back in two thousand twelve. We wanted to be a restaurant. We agreed till, to, to midnight and closing at eleven thirty. That's exactly what we want. We're too old to be running, to running, rerunning bars. And staying open till four, until two or four AM.
All right. Anybody else have any questions?
One last question. Um, you said full bar, so martini, shake and not stir?
If, if you want, whatever you prefer.
Um, uh, I think that's it. That's all the questions we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
And is there anybody else who? No, nobody else speaking? Um, we're good then.
We're still.
You're good. Um, uh, comments?
Close the hearing?
Comments, Commissioners? So, I'll close, closing the hearing. Okay, thank you.
It's late.
And we're getting this approved formally and appreciate your business.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Crane?
You okay?
Commissioner Buckbinder?
Hi.
Uh, Corey? You're good.
I don't have any, huh?
Okay.
I don't have any comments.
Good, uh.
I appreciate, I appreciate the business.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate the business. I appreciate staff's work in making the legitimation of something that, you know, was going to be temporary. It's not permanent, like see outdoor dining. Happy to see this here. Sorry.
Thank you.
Corey?
Thanks for staying so late, guys. Nothing for me.
Thank you.
I'd like to offer a motion.
I, I just.
Oh, sorry.
So, so I, I'm, I'm fine with this. Um, you know, I, I walk, I live fairly near downtown. I walk by their Altima's hopping. I'm glad you guys are being successful. And, um, you know, just, just a comment about your concern about the, the back. It's basically a parking lot back there. That's really not, uh, uh, it's not really a, a street that's reversed. The people pull in there to park. And so people are going five miles an hour or whatever. So i, it's really not, I mean, we'd have to worry about, um, a couple other restaurants that have, uh, you know, dining outdoors in their parking lots, uh, the same way that i, if we thought there was gonna be a problem with that. So I, I don't, I don't have a concern about that. That's, um, I've been, I've been around for two decades. So it's, it's like I, I know what goes on back there.
Not, not even a Tesla full surface, full self-driving?
Well, that's a whole different mission. Okay, so, um, do you have a motion?
Uh, I do have a motion. Approved.
Okay, you gotta read off of the desk item. Are you reading off the desk item?
No.
Email to you on?
Oh.
On Sunday.
Okay, somebody have it up?
I don't have it. Okay, let's see this guy.
That's all right.
It was emailed on Monday, huh?
That's the other reference you guys got. The motions were sent. I can't write, see the reference, the best guy, the reference, the best guy.
Just references, okay. So, um, yeah, I was going to, I was gonna make a motion to, to approve the conditional use modification permit with the additional conditions in the desk item that we sent.
Have a second.
Thank you.
Okay, vote. Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Majewski?
Aye.
Mr. Crane?
Aye.
Mr. Buckbinder?
Aye.
Professor Campcorn?
Aye.
Chris Sizer?
Aye.
We pass. I'm gonna ask.
Thank you very much for all your hard work.
Again, I do want to thank Larissa for the effort. There's a tremendous amount of stuff that happens behind the scenes to make this happen, so thank you very much for getting that done.
And thank you for staying so late.
So will we get a copy of the final?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, director's report. Director's report.
Uh, it's eleven forty at night. I could give you a report, or you could wait three weeks and I could give you a report then. It's your
Come on, we got, come on, five minutes. Do, do, do at least some of the report.
Victory then. I'll give you, I'll give you a quick report. Your, your, your prerogative if you want to deliberate. So just coming from the last council meeting, because there are some items that went to council you might find of interest. Uh, the Loyal and Project was approved by council. Remember, you recommended on that. Uh, council did approve an urgency ordinance. It's been interest of commission on SB six eighty-four. And SB four is our new laws on ten lots, on small lots, and allowing affordable housing on religious sites. So Campbell does have urgency ordinance standards in place. If you need access to those, our, our senior planner can give you those. Uh, we did, we just, redistributed an RFP on the Hamilton Avenue precise plan. This is a high priority precise plan area working at, so that RFP is going back out. And probably of more, most importance, uh, you had considered and approved a cell tower at your last planning commission meeting that was appealed to the council. Uh, there was substantial public comment that was received by council. The council actually upheld the appeal and denied the project. Uh, I know there might be some questions and comments that came out of that, um, we'll talk about this tonight or at a later date. You know, there are other two things that I add. I've had some questions from commissioners on using consent calendar. I could talk to you later about that. Uh, consent calendar is a great use to package items, but if they're hearing items, you typically can't put those on consent. We could talk more about how to use those on consent. Last but not least, on your next, uh, agenda, I asked, I was gonna present our work plan, uh, so you know what we're working on, and one item in the work plan is to reconsider, uh, the existential question of your site and architectural view com, committing. So should it remain as is? Should it be modified? Should it be reduced? Uh, staff has some ideas. We'd like to present that to you in the next coming months. That's all I have.
What, what the rules they could, they could control this?
Can I, um, I realize it's not specifically planning mission, but did you want to mention that we got the sustainable? Oh, sure, yeah, yeah. Two additional notes. I'm not sure if I report out. Uh, our planning division actually got, did I report this? The California American Planning Association Award of Excellence?
Yeah, yeah, that, that was great.
So, so kudos to our planners. And then, uh, we did, and kudos to Commissioner Buckbinder, he helped out a bit, apply a second time to Caltrans for a sustainable transportation planning grant is to fund, uh, a multimodal plan for the city. Now, we don't have no real comprehensive bike pedestrian plan for the city, so this will be our initial effort at developing one. Uh, we were granted the grants, about six hundred thousand dollars, and, uh, we're in discussions on how that'll be executed and start working.
Great.
Very nice. Yeah, nice.
Um, my only comment before I adjourn is, uh, I encourage all the commissioners to, uh, go and look at council's last meeting where they rejected the tower. Um, it's, 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 it's an hour and a quarter, so in the first part. And the first ten or fifteen minutes, there's no audio. So if you don't get any audio at first, keep going.
Go and do look.
Okay, but I, I encourage you to, uh, take a look at that council meeting, uh, appeal. And, 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 uh, could be educational for all of us. And, uh, with that, I adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Good night.